Because it is 15 minutes, I don't want to keep you waiting any longer than necessary. So, one of the things, if you can just tell me, can you folks unmute yourselves right now? I'll start with you, Mr. Petrazelli, since you're right in the middle of my screen. If you unmute, can you talk?
Can you hear me?
You can talk, and I see you're talking, but I don't hear you talking.
I am not muted.
Now I hear you fine.
Okay, so this is Ken Petrazelli. I'm appearing for the prosecution team, although Mr. Prager will be our lead attorney for today.
Okay, okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and start the hearing. I know Kyle is recording and perhaps others are. We usually have two people recording, although with everyone else busy. I'll ask Skylar if he can, if he can hit record too, and let's get going. I know Amy and Carol and Nicole are still working on the YouTube Live. So let's do it this way and go. So by way of introduction, I'm Alan Lilly, the presiding hearing officer for the State Water Board's Administrative Hearings Office. This hearing is being conducted by the Administrative Hearings Office. On the draft cease and desist order, the State Water Board's Division of Water Rights Assistant Deputy Director filed on November 12th of 2019 against Kevin Gonzalez and the administrative civil liability complaint against Mr. Gonzalez that the Division of Water Rights issued on May 5th of this year. And Mr. Gonzalez has requested hearings in both of these matters. The Administrative Hearings Office issued a notice of public hearing in this matter on March 12th of this year and a supplemental notice on May 15th. And then on July 8th, we issued a notice converting the in-person hearing that previously had been scheduled to a teleconference hearing and provided the broadcast information for both Zoom participating and observing. And obviously, we're having a few challenges with the observing. Incidentally, with the recording, we will post the audio plus video file of the recording on our FTP site, so that if people can't, if people were trying to participate through YouTube Live and were not able to, they will be able to, at least after the fact, listen to and watch that recording. So I have introduced the staff that are with me today, some of them. The other people are Megan Nyes, attorney, Skylar Anderson, environmental program manager, and Kyle Woldridge, Senior Water Resource Control Engineer. And previously, I introduced Nicole Mullen, Amy Blanc, and Carol Berkeley. Obviously, we're still learning, so please try to be patient. And now I'm asking, I will be asking my staff to do double duty, not only trying to get YouTube Live going, but also posting exhibits to the page or to the viewing page when we go forward. So with that, I'm going to go forward. I won't bother, since you're all being very polite and are staying on mute, I'm not going to try to control the muting unless I need to. I don't think I will. So, Mr. Petrazelli, I heard your appearance, which I appreciate. And you said Mr. Prager is going to be taking the lead. So, Mr. Prager, please enter your appearance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lilly. This is John Prager. I'm an attorney at the Office of Enforcement, and I represent the Division of Water Rights in this matter.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Prager. And then we'll get to your witnesses in just a minute. And, Mr. Gonzalez, you previously introduced yourself, but good afternoon. Thank you for your patience as we're getting going.
Good afternoon, this is Mr. Gonzalez.
Good, and I hear you fine, so that's, I appreciate that. Now, if, as I said before, if you're just listening, please just stay on mute, but you do not need to identify yourself. You're just, it's just as if you were sitting in the audience in one of our State Water Board hearing rooms. Is there anyone else who would like to present a policy statement or speak on anyone else, on anything else today? And I see, Mr. Berliner, I see you raising your hand. Are you trying to unmute? I don't think I can unmute you. I think you have to.
Yes.
Now I hear you. Thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Berliner.
Thank you. We are, I'm Thomas Amberwinner, and I am an attorney for the Merced Irrigation District. I am not a party to this proceeding. We did submit a public statement. The only reason that we got on to the Zoom call rather than the YouTube call was an indication that there might be some reason to discuss the policy statement. And so we're available to do that if necessary.
All right, and I will get up to that in a minute. But thank you very much, Mr. Berliner, for any of your appearances. And Ms. Ainsley, do you need, do you want to also enter your appearance? Or is Mr. Berliner sufficient for Merced today?
This is Julianne Ainsley, on behalf of Merced Irrigation District. Mr. Berliner is going to take the lead. In case he has to drop off the call, though, I'll be standing by.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ainsley. All right, and I don't see anybody else here, but I'll just double check. I see several State Water Board witnesses, obviously, we will get to you. But is there anybody else who would wish us to appear or make a statement during today's hearing? Okay, thank you. Oh.
Yes. I'm Jennifer Gonzalez. Hold on.
Yeah, you may be on, I don't know if you're on both phone and Zoom. Sometimes you get a feedback with that.
Mute your, on the bottom of your screen. Just a minute.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to Jennifer. Oh, there you go. Now you have to unmute. There we go. Please, go ahead.
Wait.
Now we hear you now.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you fine. No, no echo anymore, thank you.
Okay. We, Kevin and I are in the same room on separate laptops, so we'll have to figure out how to use the volume controls. I just needed to state that I'm Jennifer Gonzalez, and I'm here, and Kevin's taking the lead, but if he needs me, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, and I think that the simple way to do that is just go on mute when you're not talking, because obviously, if you both have your microphones on, you get a nasty feedback loop. But I think if you, as long as you're on mute and only one at a time speak, we should be able to take care of that problem, hopefully.
Okay.
All right, so I don't deserve, I don't see anybody else here on my screen that wishes to appear. So hearing no one else, I will move forward. And as I, if something comes up, you can raise your hand the old-fashioned way, since I see all of you this way. You can, I, I will try to keep the participants list open. However, when I do that, then I can see you're raising your hands electronically, but it does seem to occupy the center of my page. So I normally won't do that, but just raise your hand or speak up. And, you know, we'll all do the best we can. Obviously, this isn't the same as in person, and we're all still learning. But frankly, I think we're all getting pretty good at this, and this is the way we have to go. So we'll go forward. I do request during the hearing that you refer to me as Mr. Lilly and that you refer to each other by Mr. or Ms., rather than first names. Obviously, an exception, if you're referring to people on your own team. You can call them, you know, by first name if you want to, as I do with my staff. But please, otherwise, let's keep this a little bit more formal. I just think it's, it's better if we have that decorum. You do not need to say, "Your Honor," though. This is not a court. We don't, we're not, I'm not a judge, so no, your honor is required. And then, if necessary, usually, it's pretty clear who's speaking. But if we have some issues with who's speaking at any time, I will ask you to identify yourself. That certainly, it's, it's a lot clearer with video plus audio than when we were just doing audio only. We will put exhibit up when it is being discussed. You have to bear with us, it sometimes takes a minute for us to post those, especially going from one exhibit to the next. But please let us know, and Nicole, or Amy, or Carol, probably Nicole, will post each exhibit for discussion, and we'll be glad to do that as necessary. As I mentioned, we are recording this, both audio only and audio plus video. Looks like I've got four different people on my staff recording it. They're really good, so we should have good backup for that. As I stated, or as we stated in our July 8th notice, we have not ordered a court reporter. So the electronic recordings will be it. So, excuse me, just one moment. The, because the prosecution team has its burden of proving its case, it will go first today. And before the prosecution witnesses testify, I will administer the oath to them. After the prosecution team has presented its witnesses, Mr. Gonzalez may ask any of the prosecution team witnesses cross-examination questions. He doesn't have to, but he may. And I do want to emphasize, Mr. Gonzalez, that this is a different step in the proceeding than when you testify. You first get to ask the prosecution team witnesses questions, and then later in the proceeding, I will administer the oath to you, and then you may testify. So please try to make that distinction between asking questions and testifying. After that, when, as I say, the next will be, Mr. Gonzalez may testify. The prosecution team's attorney may ask him cross-examination questions. And then, if necessary, we can have rebuttal exhibits and testimony. After all the exhibits and testimony have been submitted, we will discuss whether or not to do closing arguments or file closing briefs. I already have received fairly extensive legal briefings from both the prosecution team and Mr. Gonzalez, so I'm not sure we're going to need closing briefs, but we'll discuss that at the end of the hearing today, or if we go on. We have noticed this for July, I believe it's 30th and 31st. If we need additional days, we'll see at the end of today how far we get. After the hearings have been completed and briefs filed, the matter will be deemed submitted. And then my colleagues and I will prepare a proposed order, which by law, we must complete within 90 days. Then we submit our proposed order to the clerk of the water board for consideration by the five board members. And at that time, we will submit the proposed order to representatives of all the parties, everyone else who signed up to receive Administrative Hearings Office emails, and we will post it on the web pages. And let me just check, I just got a note here. I guess we're still having challenges with the Zoom, but we will, they will keep working on that while I'm going forward with this. So, does anyone have any questions about the process before we proceed with the hearing? All right.
Yes.
Hearing none. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez, please go ahead. Your Honor, please speak.
Okay. The difference between proceedings and testifying or asking questions, do I have to go on the record by saying objections? And, or how do we deal with objections?
Okay, that's a very good question, thank you. And the answer is, I will ask each witness, including you, but also Mr. Hess and Mr. Elder and Mr. Coats, to pause before answering each question, so that you will have time for objections. And then if you're being asked a question, pause as well, so other people can make objections. And then, if you have an objection, or if Mr. Prager probably will be doing the objection for the prosecution team, if he has an objection, just speak up. And we'll have to do the best we can, but I think if we all go a little bit, one step at a time, we ought to be able to get through that without too much trouble. Yes, please state objections if you have any when the question is asked.
Mr. Lilly, I have two housekeeping questions about procedure.
Okay, go ahead.
First, there are times listed for case in chief presentations and cross-examination. How are you planning on keeping time? Do we have a designated timekeeper? Do we have a clock?
Okay, thank you, that's a good question. And the answer is, yes, I have a great display clock in my office back at the water board that shows exactly how much time everybody has. But we so far haven't figured out how to put that onto our video. Obviously, we're having enough challenges with what we're dealing with. So I will tell you at the beginning how much time you have, and I'll tell Mr. Gonzalez how much time he has for some, for having your witnesses summarize their testimony. If we need to, we'll step in on cross-examination limitations. I don't think that's going to probably be a problem here. I think we did talk about this briefly during the pre-hearing conference, and I think what we agreed to is for summarizing testimony, we're going to give each party 30 minutes. Will that be sufficient for you, Mr. Prager, for your three witnesses?
That's not my understanding. I was under the impression that the, that the time limit for case in chief was 10 minutes.
Okay, I was trying to check my notes, and I, I'm sorry, but I didn't end up putting that in the pre-hearing order. But I thought we'd said 10 minutes per witness for a total of 30, but I may be mistaken about that. Anyway, tell me how much time you propose for having your witnesses summarize their direct testimony?
My witnesses will be taking 10 minutes as a panel.
10 minutes total?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and Mr. Gonzalez, I know we talked about this before. And again, this is summarizing your written testimony. You certainly don't need to read it all, because we have it already. But do you have a time estimate for how long you think you will want to summarize your direct testimony?
I will try to summarize it. I'm a bit fearful of what's happened to me before in the past with MID not giving me due process. They didn't allow me to speak. I am gun-shy, and I am not an attorney. I had originally asked for four hours. And I, I remember we talked about it, and that's when you said 30 minutes. I will do my best, but the issue, I guess, question I have is, we've submitted a good majority of our evidence, 31 exhibits. At what point in time are all the exhibits that we submitted already moved into evidence? Because I've been cheated before, and my exhibits didn't get moved into evidence.
And the answer is, first of all, I will do everything I can to provide all parties due process. That's my number one goal here. As far as your exhibits, the way my script here is set up is after the prosecution team's witnesses testify and they're cross-examined, and I ask them questions, then we will discuss, I assume at that point, Mr. Prager will move to have his exhibits entered into evidence, and you can object, and then I will rule on that. And then, similarly, for yours, after you've testified, been subject to cross-examination and questions from me, then I will ask you if you want to move your exhibits into evidence. So they're not in evidence yet, but we will definitely cover that this afternoon. They're all are before us, and I can assure you, I've read everything. Some of it was pretty, I won't say I've read every page, but some of it was pretty thick. But I've certainly read everybody's testimony and most of the exhibits, except for the very voluminous ones that aren't directly on point. But we will do that, and I can assure you, we will do everything I can. I will do everything I can to make sure everybody gets a fair hearing here. That's my goal, my number one goal for this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lilly.
So, but I will ask, I, I think your, your written testimony, the directed, and then your rebuttal to the water boards, I think was a total of about 12 pages. As I say, you don't need to read it all. I have read it. I'm sure Mr. Prager has read it. And really, all you need to do is summarize the high points or the bullet points and so forth. So 30 minutes should be more than sufficient for that. And I, I will keep a clock on that, just because I want to be able to have this hearing move along at a fair process. So I don't want to cut you off or deny you your right to a hearing. But on the other hand, I, I think some reasonable time limits are appropriate here, and I intend to enforce those. So if you see me look to the right, it means I'm looking to my clock, and I will write down the times and do it the old-fashioned way to keep track of how much time everyone has. So, Mr. Prager, I hope that answers your question. Do you have any other questions?
I do have another question, though. About an hour ago, prosecution team uploaded rebuttal testimony and rebuttals exhibits to the AHO's FTP site. And I would like some kind of confirmation that that was received. The prosecution team plans to present oral presentations on rebuttal, PowerPoints. And can you let me know if, if your staff has received those documents?
Okay, I, we'll have to check during a break. I, I did not check the FTP site in the last hour. But we'll, we'll have a break at some point, so we'll talk about that. And we'll also see how we're doing this afternoon time-wise, to see whether or not we cover that today or whether we want to do that on another hearing day. And incidentally, we are not, we, we have noticed it for July 30th and 31st, and that's an artifact of when we had to reserve hearing rooms. Those were the only dates we could get hearing rooms for. But obviously, for Zoom, we're not subject to that limitation. So we potentially could schedule another day sooner than July 30th, if we want another day for, for that. And, and I mean, we'll see where we are, but frankly, with, you know, new things, new exhibits and testimony getting submitted, it may make more sense for us to do that on a subsequent day. But let, let's cover that when we get there.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
This is Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
On that note, I was trying to be respectful and quiet, and I had a note, forgive me. One-hour rebuttal. We did not submit our written rebuttals yet. I was under the impression that after we heard evidence, that we would submit rebuttal. Does that have to be into you today already?
No, the, the hearing notice simply says after the direct testimony is put on, the board will consider rebuttal. But that's going to be a discretionary thing, so we'll have to set a schedule for that. So let me make a note of that, since you both raised that, we certainly need to talk about that. And we'll try to do whatever is a fair and reasonable proceeding. Obviously, with doing all of this by Zoom, it's a little more cumbersome than if we were there in person. But let me just make a note, and we will do that at the appropriate time. Okay, so I'm going to put here, and I'm sure you will both remind me if I forget.
Well, I wish, this is Mr. Gonzalez. I, I haven't had time to read that either.
No. I understand, and I haven't either. And, and they haven't had time to read whatever you want to submit, because you haven't submitted it yet. So I want this to be fair for everybody, and, and that may mean we have to have more time to do this. It's, you know, it's, we're, we're dealing with the format we're dealing with. So, okay, Mr. Prager, anything else on process from you?
Yeah, I, I think I would like to state that the prosecution team submitted rebuttal testimony an hour ago merely as a convenience. It's not required under the hearing procedures to be submitted prior to the hearing, and it's not a requirement that Mr. Gonzalez have the opportunity to review that rebuttal testimony prior to the hearing. I simply uploaded it because I know that you and your staff like to be the ones who control the slides. So I thought you'd have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, well, we'll consider that, you know.
I, I'm not expecting to review Mr. Gonzalez's rebuttal testimony prior to his submission.
Okay, well, I'll just say that my, my goal is for everyone to have a fair chance to read what everyone else submits and to address it. And if that means we have to have another day, and we have to set a schedule for uploading and reviewing documents and posting them, we will do that. I mean, if we're in, if we were in an in-person hearing, the normal process is we post those on the screen, and everyone would be able to see them. We might be able to still do that here. But I'm not really, I don't really want to have surprise testimony or something like that. I would rather have this be an orderly proceeding where everyone has a chance to fully prepare. I mean, the bottom line is, I want to get to the truth. And if that takes a little more time, then that's what we'll do. But I, I want to get all of the relevant information in the record and in front of me for consideration for the decision. That's my number one goal here. So I hope that explains it. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Prager, and I, but that is my number one goal, is to make sure we get there, and we'll go through a couple of days if we need to.
Okay.
And Mr. Gonzalez, I hope that was clear, but please go ahead.
Yes, I'm trying to wait patiently.
You're doing great, thank you.
This is new to me, and I'm not an attorney.
We know, you're doing fine. Please go ahead.
I had ordered a record of survey, and due to COVID, the county agencies were not open. And the surveyor completed about 90, 95%. I may not be accurate on the percentage. We have that record, and we had submitted it, that it was under process during our evidence. We have photos that we're probably going to have to go into rebuttal, send our exhibit 11. So I guess we'll get to that when we get to that. But what I'm trying to ask you is, how are we going to deal with that?
Yeah, and I do have that on my list of questions. So if you can be patient, I, I actually saw that you had sort of submitted a placeholder for one of your exhibits. So we'll talk about that when we get there, but thank you for reminding me. Okay, so I, I hope we're done with process. But, Mr. Prager, was there something else? I don't know whether you're raising your hand or just scratching your forehead.
No, it's a nervous tic. I was not raising my hand.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Gonzalez, I think we've covered your procedural question, so we'll go ahead. I didn't mean to give you a hard time, Mr. Prager. I just wanted to make sure you weren't raising your hand. So I am going to go forward briefly with Mr. Berliner's letter, which the hearing office received on Monday, July 13. That letter was characterized as a public comment, but asked me to strike certain portions of Mr. Gonzalez's written testimony. And after I received that letter, I sent a reply email to Mr. Berliner with copies to Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Petrazelli and Mr. Prager to transmit it, so they would both have that as well. And I believe we have also posted that to our FTP site. And frankly, Mr. Berliner, I think your letter is quite clear, but very briefly, do you have any oral comments you would like to add at this time? And just remember to go on.
No.
Excuse me?
No, I do not. I do not.
All right, and, Mr. Gonzalez, I know you sent a brief email on that. Do you have any brief comments you would like to make in response to Mr. Berliner's letter?
Yes, sir, Your Honor, this is Kevin Gonzalez. Mr. Lilly, I adamantly object to his comments. I've been slandered since 2012 in the newspaper, lies made up about me. And when I tell the truth, I tell the truth. And when I tell the truth, what led up to this investigation, it's all important. It's all pertinent to how we got here, and it's all the truth.
Okay, and, Mr. Prager, you've seen that. Do you have any comments on Mr. Berliner's letter?
The prosecution doesn't disagree with Mr. Berliner's letter.
Okay, is that it?
Your Honor, Mr. Lilly?
Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez, I think your point is pretty clear, but please go ahead.
Okay, my point I'd like to add is, it's me, one lonesome farmer against an entire team, not just a team at the State Water Resources Control Board, but a colluding team that has five, six, seven people that were my attorneys when I was a board member on the Merced Irrigation District. And I think having that kind of astounding numbers against one little farmer is unfair.
Okay, well, that's why we have this office, and that's to give you a chance for a fair hearing. And I, as I've said before, I will do all I can to do that, but I appreciate your comments. So I'm just going to say, Mr. Berliner, and you obviously know this, because I think you alluded to this in the hearing notice. The hearing notice very clearly says that only parties will be allowed to make objections, present evidence, make objections, and examine witnesses. And that the hearing officer, in his discretion, may authorize additional people and entities to participate as parties, but they have to file notices of intent to appear. Obviously, Merced Irrigation District did not file any notice of intent to appear. And I don't, do not believe that there are any exceptional circumstances that would justify authorizing Merced Irrigation District to appear now. The statements in Mr. Gonzalez's, that his written testimony or proposed testimony that Merced Irrigation District objects to, in my view, may be relevant under Water Code Section 1055.3 on the issue of the amount of any civil penalties that may be imposed. So I am not going to strike that testimony. Your comments will be in the record as a policy statement, and I have certainly noted them. But at this point, I want to give Mr. Gonzalez and I have certainly noted them. But at this point, I want to give Mr. Gonzalez a full opportunity to make whatever statements he believes are appropriate. And if that includes criticizing public agencies and public figures, that is his right to do that here. So I'm going to allow that testimony, deny your motion to strike. Do you want to say something, Mr. Berliner?
I don't really think so. I think that if you want to go ahead and allow Mr. Gonzalez to pursue this, I will just rely on the State Water Board Prosecution Staff to deal with it.
Okay, that will be fine. Thank you, Mr. Berliner. All right, so before we get going, I'm going to just check my notes here. It looks like we're still working on trying to get the YouTube live going, but I don't know that we're going to be able to. I think we're going to just have to plan to post the recording of this hearing afterwards on our FTP site for any interested parties. And they can't hear me say this, but if any of you want to pass the word around, I apologize that we haven't been able to post this the way we thought we would. Some people, it looks like a few people may have joined the Zoom meeting, that that information was in the hearing notice. So hopefully, people can hook in that way if they're interested. And as I say, otherwise, listen to the recording. So, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
I have a medical issue where I have to use the restroom every one or two hours. Will we be taking scheduled breaks?
Of course. And if you need to take a break before I've gotten to it, just let me know, and we will schedule a break. We will be glad to accommodate that, and anyone else's reasonable request like that. As I say, we're, we try to be fair here, and we want to get to the truth, and we don't want anything to interfere with that. So yes, we will do that. All right, so with that, Mr. Prager, we've talked about witness testimony. You've submitted written, proposed written testimony for, excuse me, written proposed testimony for Mr. Cervantes, Mr. Hess, and Mr. Elder. And they're all here on the screen. They have been waiting patiently. As I said, I had thought, although I haven't gone back to check my notes, but I thought we'd said ten minutes maximum per witness and thirty minutes maximum per party to summarize testimony. It looks like you can go faster than that, and that certainly is fine. Obviously, we will continue then with the rest of the proceeding. So with that, are you ready to proceed? And I assume I have them in the order that they are listed as exhibits. So I was assuming you were going first with Mr. Cervantes, and then Mr. Hess, and then Mr. Elder. Is that the way you want to proceed?
In answer to your question, yes. I do have one last thing before we begin with case in chief. I apologize for dragging this out. But as long as we're talking about evidentiary objections, I would like to object, the prosecution team would like to object to certain portions of Mr. Gonzalez's written testimony. I'm not entirely sure when you would like me to make that objection. Do you want me to wait?
Yeah. Why don't you wait until we get to his testimony?
Okay.
And then, I mean, normally, I would ask him to summarize it, and then you could object before it's written into the record. If you think you need to object before he starts summarizing it, we can talk about that. But let's wait until we get to his presentation of his testimony to do that.
We can wait.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, so, but, okay, so you did say we'll start with Mr. Cervantes. And I do want to administer the oath separately since we're doing this remotely. So Mr. Cervantes, you've been waiting patiently, but can you go off mute and raise your right hand? Mr. Cervantes, do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. And actually, we'll go ahead with the other administering the oath before we have people start testifying. So Mr. Hess, can you go off mute? Mr. Hess, do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. And Mr. Elder, do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Right, thank you all. All right, so Mr. Prager, you may proceed with your asking questions for Mr. Cervantes first to summarize his written testimony. And I'm going to just get up the slides that have his summary testimony.
Mr. Lilly, I have opening statement prepared. Is that all right if I provide that before Mr. Cervantes provides his case in chief summary?
Yes, you may provide a brief opening statement. As long as the total, which I think won't be a problem from what you said before, for your statement and the summaries of testimony is thirty minutes. So I'll mark us down at 10:51, and please proceed. Excuse me, I don't know if I said ten. I meant 1:51 PM. It's your start time. So please go ahead, Mr. Prager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lilly. My name is John Prager, and I've said before my name, or that I'm with the Office of Enforcement, and I represent the Division of Water Rights in this enforcement action. Mr. Gonzalez owns an almond orchard in Merced County. The property contains an eight-acre foot reservoir that's filled with water from the adjacent creek. That reservoir has been there for at least the last twenty years. But until recently, Mr. Gonzalez has never used the water in the reservoir to irrigate his almond orchard. But in 2015, during the height of an unprecedented drought, Mr. Gonzalez had a dispute with his local irrigation district and decided to stop purchasing water from them. Instead, he began taking water from the reservoir and using it to irrigate a twenty-nine-acre almond orchard without any basis of right. We know this because he told us that he did it. During the Division of Water Rights inspection of the property, and in the written testimony submitted prior to today's hearing, Mr. Gonzalez admitted to applying water from the reservoir to his almond crop instead of purchasing water from Merced Irrigation District. These facts are not in dispute.
I object.
Gonzalez was at the time.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez, this is an opening statement. This is not testimony. So what he, Mr. Prager is not under oath, so you're not allowed to object to what he says. This is just arguments. Please let him go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Prager.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez was, at the time, a board member of Merced Irrigation District and has been a farmer for many years, and has some understanding of California water rights law. It's reasonable to assume that Mr. Gonzalez knew what he was doing when he changed his long-term irrigation practice of using water purchased from MID to using the water that was unlawfully diverted and stored into the reservoir. However, when confronted by the Division of Water Rights with allegations of unauthorized diversion, Mr. Gonzalez presented conflicting, mutually exclusive, and sometimes false claims as to where the water comes from, how he diverts it into the reservoir, how much water he applied to his almond crop, and why he was not at fault. Even when presented with analysis showing that his claims were false, Mr. Gonzalez persisted. More than two years after the division completed its investigation, his diversion and storage of water from Canal Creek into his reservoir is ongoing. We are here today to discuss whether the board will impose an administrative civil liability for his unauthorized diversion of water and issue a cease and desist order. Evidence supports statutory maximum civil liability of roughly $471,000 for violations occurring in 2015, 2016, and 2017. This is based on an estimated eighty days of irrigation and one hundred and sixty-two acre feet of water during a declared drought emergency. Based on the considerations outlined in the complaint, including, but not limited to, the extent of harm caused by the violation, the nature and persistence of the violation, the length of time over which the violation occurred, and the lack of corrective action taken by the violator, the complaint proposes an ACL of $165,000. The prosecution team desires a strong penalty to discourage Mr. Gonzalez from diverting without a basis of right in the future and to discourage others who are similarly situated. A cease and desist order is necessary to assure compliance now and in the future. Mr. Gonzalez appears to have no intention of stopping his diversion and storage of water into the reservoir. Mr. Gonzalez has claimed that he plans to continue diverting and storing water in the future to support the recreational, aesthetic, and wildlife enhancement beneficial uses that the reservoir provides without any basis of right. Until the reservoir is rendered and capable of storing water, the reservoir will continue to be filled with unauthorized water from Canal Creek. A cease and desist order is necessary. And with that, I'd like to introduce my witnesses for this case. Mr. Robert Cervantes, who will testify.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Who will testify about the enforcement program generally and the need for an ACL and CDO in this case. Mr. Damon Hess, who will tell us about his investigation into this matter. And Mr. Brian Elder, who will tell us about his analysis of the economic benefit derived from the violation. Thank you.
All right, and with that, Mr. Cervantes has already taken the oath. And would you like us to put up Exhibit PT-6, which is his slide?
Yes, I'd like that. Thank you.
Yes, please do so.
All right, and Mr. Cervantes, while Nicole is getting Exhibit PT-6 posted, please, if there's any way you can click on the lower left-hand corner where there's the little microphone icon on your screen, click on the arrow and go to audio settings and turn the volume for the microphone up all the way if you've not already, because it's a little hard to hear you.
All right.
Okay, and oh, I hope we didn't, I hope we didn't lose Mr. Cervantes. He was here. There he is. Okay, so Mr. Cervantes, please go ahead.
One moment, please. I'm just getting situated here on my end.
Okay, yeah, as long as you speak loud, fairly loudly, we can hear you. Okay.
All right, am I coming through right now?
Yes, that is perfect. Please go ahead.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Mr. Lilly. My name is Robert Cervantes. My testimony today supports the prosecution team's recommendation to issue a final cease and desist order and an administrative civil liability against the respondent, Mr. Gonzalez. I have been the Water Rights Enforcement Manager for eleven months. Slide two, please. Consistent, fair, and transparent enforcement enables the division to protect public trust resources and senior water rights while providing a deterrent for misuse and unauthorized diversion of water. Progressive enforcement provides the opportunity to correct violations. Appropriate penalties remove the competitive advantage over those who voluntarily incur the cost of compliance. Slide three, please. Issuing the final CDO and ACL is consistent with the division's core goals of protecting human health, water users, and public trust resources while encouraging compliance. The division actively discourages diverters from illegally profiting from unauthorized diversions. Slide four, please. An ACL is warranted in this case. Evidence demonstrates that at the height of our most recent drought, Mr. Gonzalez diverted water from Canal Creek into the reservoir, stored it, and used it to irrigate a high-value crop without a valid basis of right. This unauthorized diversion contributed to ongoing impacts to downstream water rights and public trust resources. The ACL must be at least high enough to provide a meaningful deterrent and to recover the value derived from the unauthorized diversion and the substantial investment of time bringing the respondent into compliance. This concludes my testimony.
All right. Rather, just so we can help make it easier to keep track of time, we'll just go forward and have Mr. Hess summarize his direct testimony, then have Mr. Elder do that, and then we'll shift over to Mr. Gonzalez asking cross-examination questions. Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, you have a question?
Yes, sir. When can I object to questionable statements? Can I object?
I think the best time for you to do that, well, I mean, you can ask Mr. all of the witnesses questions. And then when we're, I will ask them, and I'm sure Mr. Prager will offer their exhibits into evidence. And at that time, you can object to anything that you think is inappropriate. So you'll have a chance, but I don't think you need to do it now. So just bear with us, and I will certainly give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, so if that's okay with you, Mr. Prager, I think it's going to work best if we just have you go right forward to Mr. Hess's summary.
That's what I assumed we would do. We're prepared for that.
Please, go ahead.
First, Mr. Hess's testimony is next. He needs his slides up.
Okay, that is, is that exhibit? Let's get the right number. Is it number seven, I think?
Yeah, PT-7.
Okay, so Nicole, please put up PT-7 on the screen.
We'll be doing the same thing with Mr. Elder's testimony as well.
Yeah, his will be PT-8. So so, yeah, and Mr. Hess, please just let us know when you want to move her on slide one now. And we'll just go forward with slides after that. Just let us know when you want her to advance.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Damon Hess. I'm a Water Resources Control Engineer in the Enforcement Section of the Division of Water Rights. My written testimony is offered into evidence as Exhibit PT-4, and my statement of qualifications is Exhibit PT-10. I'd like to address two typos in my testimony that have bearing on the substance of particular exhibits. First, in paragraph forty-nine of my written testimony, prosecution team Exhibit PT-19 is a GIS map of Canal Creek, and the data source is incorrectly attributed to open source QGIS and ArcGIS.
Wait, 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 wait. So let's make sure we've got this. I'm on page fourteen of Exhibit Four at line nineteen. Is that where you are?
I will need to pull that up, sir. One moment.
Okay, I did. I just would like to make a note right now while we don't, while we have it.
Could you please restate what page we're on?
Yeah, I think Mr. Hess said paragraph forty-nine.
Yes.
Which is on page fourteen.
Yes, it is paragraph forty-nine, beginning on line eighteen. Or nineteen.
Yes. Please tell us what the correction is.
Okay, the data was actually obtained from the National Hydrography Data Set.
Okay, so instead of saying ESRIs, ArcGIS, and open source QGIS, or it's say something else?
The National Hydrography Data Set.
Okay.
Mr. Lilly, I I could not see PT-7 and PT-10 off of your webpage. Wasn't available. I do have printed versions, but I can't see what he's referring to.
Okay, well, what we'll do is he'll tell us his other correction, and the easiest thing will then be, Mr. Hess, please just work with Mr. Prager and just send me an email with a copy to Mr. Gonzalez with these corrections. I mean, it's no problem, but it'd probably be good anyway for us to have a written record of the corrections. So can you just tell us what the other correction was?
Yes. Second, in paragraph twenty-seven, the very last sentence, I inadvertently cite to Exhibit PT-12, but I meant to cite to PT-26, which is a map of watersheds of the Merced River and Canal Creek.
Okay, so that, Mr. Gonzalez, we'll just ask, those are fairly minor corrections. I mean, they're important, but they're not very lengthy. So we'll just ask Mr. Prager to send us an email after the hearing today with those changes, and we'll make sure to put that into the record. So with that, Mr. Hess, you may proceed with your summary.
Mr. Lilly, are you asking for a new version of the testimony, or just a bullet list of those two changes?
Just a list, just, I think the easiest thing, Mr. Prager, is just write out the sentence as it appears in the draft, and then with red lines, strike out, show what changes you want to make. And just those two sentences will be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hess, please proceed. All right, Mr. Hess, please proceed.
I've taken the oath, and I have no other changes to my testimony. My testimony will include my personal knowledge of the complaint filed by Merced Irrigation District against Kevin Gonzalez, the subsequent investigation and site inspection, the determination that Mr. Gonzalez was diverting and using water with no valid basis of right, the remediation required by the Division of Water Rights, and the maximum statutory penalty authorized by Water Code Section ten fifty-two. Slide two, please. On November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, MID submitted a complaint to the Division of Water Rights contesting Mr. Gonzalez's claim of riparian right in the initial statement of diversion and use that he filed, and argued that Mr. Gonzalez has no valid basis of right to divert or use the waters of Canal Creek. On January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Gonzalez submitted his response. The response asserts that the reservoir is naturally formed and has no outlet, that it fills when Canal Creek exceeds its banks during floods, and that the character of the water is floodwater that does not require a permit from the State Water Board. The response further asserts that Mr. Gonzalez has unexercised riparian rights on his property and that he's never diverted from Canal Creek. Slide three, please. On January twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, I performed a site inspection that included the reservoir and the adjacent almond orchards. I observed the reservoir appeared to have been constructed through excavation adjacent to Canal Creek. The reservoir was separated from the stream channel by a thin embankment of what appeared to be native soil. I observed the reservoir did not have inlet or outlet channels, and there was no signs of erosion. I also observed a pipe connecting the reservoir and Canal Creek. On May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, I completed the report of investigation. The report concluded that Mr. Gonzalez had no valid basis of right to divert or use the water from Canal Creek, that unauthorized diversion was ongoing, and recommended formal enforcement. Slide four, please. The diversion and use occurring on Mr. Gonzalez's property fulfills the elements required for enforcement of Water Code Section ten fifty-two. Canal Creek is a natural channel with defined bed and banks, and it conveys both natural flow and appropriated water. Water is diverted from Canal Creek into the reservoir through the pipe connecting the two. This water is seasonally stored and later used for irrigation of the almond orchard on the property. There is no permit or license from the State Water Board or any other basis of right to authorize this diversion and use. Slide five, please. In January two thousand fourteen, Governor Brown declared a state of emergency due to severe drought conditions, which ended in April two thousand seventeen. Mr. Gonzalez diverted water during irrigation seasons two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen. The total maximum statutory liability for this is four hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Slide six, please. Water Code Section ten fifty-five point three states that in determining the amount of civil liability, the board shall take into consideration all relevant circumstances, including, but not limited to, the extent of harm caused by the violation, the nature and persistence of the violation, the length of time over which the violation occurs, and the correction action, if any, taken by the violator. The diversion directly harmed senior water rights by diverting at times water was being transferred to Stevenson Water District as required by adjudication. The diversion also reduced the water available to downstream public trust resources, such as wildlife habitat at the San Luis and San Joaquin National Wildlife Refugees. Additionally, the reservoir was constructed through excavation, leaving a thin embankment of native soil between the reservoir and Canal Creek and presents an ongoing public safety hazard. Slide seven, please. The length of time over which the diversion occurred is twenty-five years. Diversion began on or before July eleventh, nineteen ninety-five, and has continued until present. Regarding the nature and persistence of the violation, the diverter constructed the reservoir in a flood easement prohibiting excavation or fill operations, engaged in unauthorized diversion while a board member of MID, and was diverting when hundreds of downstream water rights holders were informed that there was no water available for their priority of right. The diverter has not taken any corrective action to date, abating the water rights violations or threatened violations. He did not dispute the findings of the reported investigation or provide any additional information, even though he was informed he could do so, nor has he attempted to achieve compliance. Slide eight, please. To complete the investigation, five staff members worked a conservative estimate of three hundred thirty-six hours, resulting in forty-three thousand two hundred forty-one dollars in staff cost. This did not include the development of the subsequent charging documents. The total economic benefit calculated is forty-one thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. Based on these factors, the division recommends a penalty of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
All right, does that conclude your testimony, Mr. Hess?
Yes, it does.
I mean, excuse me, a summary of your testimony. All right, so Mr. Elder, you may proceed with the summary of your testimony, and I believe your summary slides are exhibit PT eight, so we'll put that up on the screen.
Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Elder. I'm a senior.
And Mr. Elder, either, if you can just speak a little more loudly, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
How's that? Is that a little better?
Much better. Perfect. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Elder. I'm a senior engineer in the Office of Enforcement. The testimony I prepared is offered into evidence as exhibit PT dash five, and my statement of qualifications is exhibit PT dash eleven. I have taken the oath, and I have no changes to make to my testimony. My testimony will focus on the diverters' economic benefit derived from the violation. Slide two, please. Economic benefit is the economic advantage an entity enjoys due to delaying or avoiding compliance costs. Essentially, by not doing something either on time or ever, the entity saves money or even profits. Recovery of economic benefit is important in that it acts as a deterrent to those skirting the regulations in order to save money, but also seeks to eliminate any competitive advantage one may have over those who maintain compliance. Compliance costs are and should be the cost of doing business. In this case, the three types of compliance actions a diverter failed to take were, they avoided annual water rights fees associated with unauthorized diversions, they avoided infrastructure to obtain the water from a legal purveyor, and they delayed paying for diverted water until they were caught. Slide three, please. The diverter failed to apply for and obtain a permit to appropriate water from the State Water Board. This includes the initial application fee for eight acre feet in nineteen ninety-five, an application fee for the additional one hundred and one acre feet in two thousand fifteen, and annual fees from fiscal years two thousand four to two thousand nineteen. In total, these fees add up to over five thousand dollars. Slide four, please. Had the diverter obtained purchased water from MID legally, a lateral water delivery system from an approved MID connection point would have been required. The diverter therefore avoided construction and installation costs associated with a lateral connection. Several design considerations were assumed to estimate the cost of construction as shown here. Through this analysis, it is expected that an eight-inch pipe diameter would be required to achieve optimal pipe flow velocity. Using standard industry costs and construction techniques, the estimated construction costs were approximately sixty thousand dollars. Slide five, please. Following the unauthorized diversions from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, MID determined the costs associated with the unauthorized diversions to be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Gonzalez paid for those diversions in January twenty eighteen, although it is assumed that those payments should have been received by MID on an annual basis. The delay in payment for the past years provides the diverter a benefit, allowing the diverter to potentially spend cash on other opportunities in the short term. Slide six, please. To calculate the actual economic benefit, the BEN financial model developed by US EPA is typically used to account for time value of money and the potential tax deductibility of compliance expenditures. The results of that analysis are reflected here. So in total, the economic benefit in this case is approximately forty-two thousand dollars. This concludes my testimony.
All right, thank you. So I'll, I'll just, I'm happy to note, Mr. Prager, you did it all in less than thirty minutes, which we appreciate.
That's, that's because that's what the, never mind.
Yeah, it's, I'm giving you a compliment, so just take it. It's fine. We'll proceed. All right, so, Mr. Gonzalez, it's been an hour and a quarter now. Would you like to take a break now, or do you want to do your, your cross-examination questions and then take a break?
I'd like to do my cross-examinations. Forgive me for being angry, but there was lots of lies, and I have to object a lot before I can go to the restroom.
Okay, so, Mr. Gonzalez, and since you're not an attorney, I do want to explain to you the, the process, because it's, it's a little bit complicated. You basically get three different opportunities to make your arguments during this hearing, and it's important to make each one during the right part. You can ask any of these witnesses questions, which are really to get them to explain something in their testimony or explain something that you think they omitted in their testimony or that should have been added. And that's now. And then, when Mr. Prager offers their exhibits into evidence, you'll have a chance to object to their testimony, which is different, but if you think there's something in their testimony that's inappropriate, you may object, and I'll rule on that. And then, of course, the third thing is you may testify, where you may tell, I, I won't say your side of the story, but you may tell us anything that you think is important. So please keep in mind that those are three different things, because I, particularly for people who don't have legal training, a lot of times the three get confused. So this is just for asking these three witnesses questions, and then the objections and your testimony will come later. So with that, please proceed.
Okay, so the objections come later?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, I would like to cross-examine Mr. Cervantes, then.
All right, please go ahead. Mr. Cervantes, you are still under oath. Mr. Gonzalez, you may ask Mr. Cervantes questions.
Mr. Cervantes, you mentioned that you've been in your position for eleven months. Correct.
Yes. Okay, make sure to get close to the microphone when you speak, Mr. Cervantes.
Yes, that's correct.
Where were you working? What was your job title in nineteen ninety-five through present, before this job?
Nineteen ninety-five? I've, I've had multiple jobs since, since nineteen ninety-five. I graduated from high school in nineteen ninety-six. I don't know how that's relevant to this particular case. I don't feel comfortable answering that question.
Well, and Mr. Gonzalez, I, I can help you a little bit with that, because Mr. Cervantes did submit his resume, which lists the dates of his employment, so that is in the record, and that's exhibit ET nine. So that provides a chronological description of all his different jobs. Also has his education, his degree, and then all his jobs since then. So that is in the record.
Okay, let me rephrase my question then. If he wasn't on my property in nineteen ninety-five, how can he reasonably assume that in twenty fifteen that I had used one hundred and sixty-two days and four hundred and eighty acre feet? That seems to be false and misleading to me, so maybe I should rephrase that before you object.
And I, I, I won't object. You're, you're right, Mr. Gonzalez. I was not on your property. I've never been on your property. However, we have used the, the best technology we have available to us. We've used Google Earth that, that has time-lapse images going back many years, nineteen ninety-five through present being a time period for which we can view what has occurred on your property. And we also have access to county recorder records and records from other agencies as well that describes property transfers.
I have a photo in front of me out of Mr. Hess's that you're referring to, then, off of page twelve. It was a blurry pixelated photo from six twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-five, where during an inspection, you're accepting Mr. Hess's statement, and you're saying that a blurry pixelated photo from nineteen ninety-five. Are you familiar with those photos that you said you referred to?
I'd need to know specifically where in the record you're referring.
It's in the investigation on page twelve. I'll show it to you right here.
And we can put that up on the screen. That's exhibit PT twelve. And it's page twelve of the numbered pages. I think in the PDF file, it may be about page sixteen. So Nicole, please see if you can put that up on the screen. PT twelve, and we'll go to page, we'll go to page sixteen. That should be pretty close. That went back one.
There it is, back up one.
Back up two. Keep it back up. One more back. That one.
That one. Do you see?
That's the one you, that's the one you were asking about, Mr. Gonzalez, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Cervantes, do you see the picture in the lower left-hand corner dated six twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-five?
Yes.
Do you agree with that photo?
What is it about the photo are you asking? Do I believe that it is a photo of your property? Yes.
Okay, so I went to the webpage, that same exact photo and that same exact number, the same exact page where he got it, which is in my exhibit you passed to.
Now, that, that might be good for you to testify to when we get to your testimony, Mr. Gonzalez. And certainly, it's perfectly appropriate for you to do that then, but that will be part of your testimony.
Okay, what I'm trying to get at now is that this eleven-month supervisor, I guess I should rephrase my question, is, Mr. Cervantes, are you Mr. Hess's supervisor?
Yes, I am.
Did you directly review his investigation?
I reviewed the report, yes.
You mentioned in your statement that I took four hundred acre, four hundred and eighty acre feet. How did you come to that conclusion?
I'd like to object on the basis that that's a misstatement of Mr. Cervantes's testimony.
Okay, I have the right to examine his testimony, do I not?
Yeah, Mr. Cervantes, if we can probably get through this easiest, and I don't, I was trying to take notes, but how many acre feet did you say Mr. Gonzalez diverted during or used during twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen?
I didn't specify a number. That, that was in Mr. Hess's testimony, I believe.
Okay, so, Mr. Gonzalez, that might be something you, it's better for you to ask Mr. Hess about, which certainly you're allowed to do.
Well, on his screen, Mr. Lily, he said I've operated one hundred and sixty-two days. And they had a number. That's how he came up with one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's on his screen. Can we go?
Okay, yeah, let's go to that, then. Let's put up PT six, exhibit PT six. You're with us. We're getting, we're getting there.
That'll be my testimony. What I'm trying to get at, which will probably be in my testimony, is we submitted to the investigator thirty-four days of runtime with meter readings. And my question to you, Mr. Cervantes, is, did you see my information that I submitted to the investigator?
Okay, well, that's certainly a question he can answer, so please go ahead, Mr. Cervantes.
Okay, I'd like to pull up specifically where in my oral presentation Mr. Gonzalez is referring to. I need to see what slide this is.
You'll have to go through the slides, and I saw.
Okay, go through slowly, Nicole. It's not slide one, obviously. Go to slide two. Is that, I don't think that's it. You want to move on?
You pause there for a second, Mr. Lily?
Yes, of course.
I, I object to your protecting the beneficial uses of the water. When you looked at the beneficial uses of water, can you tell me what the first and second most beneficial use of water is, to your knowledge?
As it pertains to your case or as it pertains generally?
Generally, to anybody.
Drinking water is, is a, a primary benefit. Public trust resources is a primary benefit, or protection of public trust resources. There's, there's many beneficial uses, and, and you can consider. There's many beneficial uses, and you can consider them to be co-equal. That's how I'll answer that question.
And I'm going to testify to this. So would you say that irrigation water is the second most important beneficial use?
I would say that irrigation is a beneficial use.
Have you referred to Water Code Section 101 and 102?
Water Code 101 and 102. I'm looking at that right now. I need a moment.
Just take a moment. That's fine.
Okay, what about it?
I'm trying to point out to you that it does state that the second most important beneficial use is irrigation. Domestic and then irrigation. Would you agree to that statement out of the Water Code?
I'm reading 101 right now, and I do not see where it orders.
Let's go over while you're on 101. Can you read the very first sentence of Water Code 101 to me?
Riparian rights in a stream or water course attached to, but to no more than so much of the flow thereof, as may be required or used consistently with this and the next preceding section, for the purposes for which lands are or may be made adaptable in view of such reasonable beneficial uses, provided however that nothing in this or the next preceding section shall be construed as depriving any riparian owner of the reasonable use of water in the stream to which his land is riparian under reasonable methods of diversion and use, or depriving any appropriator of water to which he is lawfully entitled.
Have you reviewed my riparian claim S0? What's my number?
No, not specifically, I haven't.
So before you went into this, did you realize that I had a riparian claim number S024? Let me quote that correctly. It's number seven.
No, I haven't reviewed it. However, I do know that holders of riparian rights are not authorized to store that water, generally speaking. And so I-
It's not about storing water.
I'm answering your question, so please let me finish. I understand what you're saying, that you have a riparian right. And in my experience, holders of riparian rights are not able to store water under that riparian right.
Okay, so-
You're storing water in a pond that you're claiming is riparian, and that is unauthorized.
Were you given in the investigation the O&M manual of the Castle Dam project? Are you aware of it?
I had staff review the O&M manual, yes. But I didn't review it myself.
Okay. The project map belonging to Lance Williams, 107, Gordon Fisher, 108E, 108E1 for Gordon Fisher, and 110E for Joe Baker. Are you, do you understand that I own all those properties now, and therefore they're transferred to me indeed? Not just in deed they are, but in writing and trustee deed they are.
I don't know that. If you're claiming that now, this is the first I'm hearing of it. This is the first time. I don't know. I don't know how this matters to my testimony.
Oh, it's extremely important to your testimony, because your investigator brought you information, and you came up with a lot of statements here, and a lot of money that you're trying to claim.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, please try to keep this to short questions for Mr. Cervantes. As I said, you'll have a chance to testify, but right now, try to keep it to questions. And I think the shorter they are, the clearer it'll be for all of us.
Okay. So would your reasonable answer be that you have not seen the O&M manual of Castle Dam project?
I personally have not reviewed in full the O&M, the Castle Dam O&M manual.
Have you seen the easement of deed on my land? Four different points, 107, 108, 108E1, and 110E.
I've reviewed our investigatory report as it relates to your case. So I don't remember specifically what deeds or parcels of land that you claim to own. I don't recall off the top of my head which one specifically I've seen.
What is a senior water right?
A senior water right is a water right that has come into the system at a date prior to yours.
No, that's incorrect.
Just questions now, Mr. Gonzalez, please.
Mr. Lilly, do you mind if I ask a procedural question?
Please, go ahead.
My understa- I've been keeping some semblance of time on a stopwatch on my phone. My understanding is that Mr. Gonzalez has been cross-examining Robert for about 15 minutes. The prosecution team has presented their case in chief as panel. Each witness has taken a small portion of the case in chief presentation. Mr. Cervantes's presentation was only, I don't know, two minutes, and his written testimony is similarly narrow. Mr. Gonzalez is asking a number of questions that would be better answered by Mr. Hess. My question to you about process, the hearing procedures specifically state that cross-examiners will be limited to 15 minutes per witness or panel of witnesses. So, the prosecution team has presented-
And it's a violation of my due process.
Wait, wait. Mr. Gonzalez, let Mr. Prager finish, please. One person at a time here.
Prosecution team has presented a panel of witnesses, and my understanding is that Mr. Gonzalez is out of time. I don't know if you've been keeping time as closely as I am, and I don't have a way to check your time versus my time.
I have, and I was at 15 minutes also. Your timing is pretty good. So is your question, how much time am I going to allow Mr. Gonzalez for cross-examination?
Particularly when Mr. Gonzalez is cross-examining a witness regarding elements that are outside of his testimony, that would be better served towards a different panel party.
Okay, so Mr. Gonzalez, how much time? Mr. Prager's calculations of time are generally correct. You've had 15 minutes on Mr. Cervantes. I'm sure you'll want to have questions for Mr. Hess and Mr. Elder as well. How much time are you planning, or would you like to have, to cross-examine all three witnesses?
As much as it takes. I'll try to speed through this as best I can, but that doesn't seem to be appropriate for due process.
Well, it is a challenge. I certainly don't want to deny you your due process rights, but on the other hand, you do not have a due process right to question basically as long as you want. As a hearing officer, I do have the authority to limit your time. And I think, frankly, I think Mr. Prager has a fairly good point here, that a lot of these questions, Mr. Hess is going to be more qualified to answer. So, and it's more efficient, and frankly, you'll get more points across if you direct them to him. So, let's do this. Why don't you try to wrap up with Mr. Cervantes? Do you think you can do that in five minutes, and then we'll go forward with Mr. Hess?
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's 2:35. Try to wrap up by 2:40 with Mr. Cervantes.
Okay, Mr. Cervantes.
Mr. Lilly, to be clear, is your ruling that each of the prosecution team witnesses are going to be allowed to be cross-examined for 15 minutes separately?
I'm going to, Mr. Prager, I'm going to play it by ear. I understand what you're saying, that hearing notice does say, subject to the hearing officer's discretion to allow more time for cross-examination. And in fairness to Mr. Gonzalez, not only was there the testimony, but there were exhibits submitted that are a total of at least two inches and probably three inches thick. And this is the first chance Mr. Gonzalez has had to ask questions about these witnesses. So I'm trying to balance your concern about this taking too long, and his concern about having a fair opportunity to ask questions. And I'm going to play it by ear, but I'm going to try to keep it moving along. So, with that, Mr. Gonzalez, please try to wrap up your question for Mr. Cervantes in the next five minutes.
Very well. Mr. Cervantes, I know you sworn in. Did you also sign in to uphold the Constitution when you were employed by the state? STD 689.
I believe so.
Do you understand that the Constitution deters over finding people to make examples of punitive damages in the Fifth and Eighth Amendment? Fifth Amendment.
I did not know that. Yeah, I believe I've read that. Yes, sure.
Can we go to the next screen? So we can move on.
Yes, slide three. Thank you.
Preventing future economic benefit from unauthorized diversions. So is it clear to say that you said you had not seen my riparian claim number? You did not review it?
I did not specifically review your riparian claim. That's right.
Would that have changed your opinion if you were calling this an unauthorized diversion, if you had known that I had a riparian claim?
No, it wouldn't have, because you're storing water in an unauthorized pond. So you're appropriating it all without a valid basis of right.
Okay, is it clear that you did not review my deed of easements and the information that I submitted to you from the operation and maintenance manual that clearly states that there is ponding on my water and will forever and ever have ponding on my water, on my land?
I did not specifically review that, but I have somebody on staff that can address those concerns later in this testimony.
Can we go to the next slide?
Okay, just for the record, we have exhibit PT6, slide four up on the screen.
Provide meaningful deterrent. Would that be deemed under the Constitution as a punitive damage?
Not necessarily. No, I don't think that it is. What we're trying to do is to encourage diverters to follow the law. And so by taking enforcement action within our authority, that's a way of encouraging the diverting community, the water resource community, to follow the law. So penalties that we levy are within our authority in the Water Code.
I understand your authority. Would you say your authority is mistaken if you would have recognized that I have a riparian claim?
No.
For what reason?
Because you're storing water without a valid basis of right.
Did you know that water is being stored on my property by the United States Army Corps of Engineers?
I don't know that to be actually the case.
Have you reviewed Water Code 12667?
No.
12667, for your information, is the Water Code for Merced County Streams Flood Control Project, where it specifically states easement number 108-E1 is the only permanent flooding easement on my property herein referred to as the pond.
So just go ahead and ask questions, Mr. Gonzalez, please.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to object again. Mr. Gonzalez has spent much of his cross-examination time testifying rather than asking questions.
And I understand that, Mr. Prager. He's not under oath yet, and we'll address that appropriately. So, Mr. Gonzalez, you're on the last slide here for Mr. Cervantes. Are you ready to move on to Mr. Hess yet?
Move on to the next screen, please.
I think that's the last slide of his last slide.
The proposed penalty of $165,000, was it not supported by a statement? How did he come up with, Mr. Cervantes, how did you come up with $165,000?
All right, so $165,000 seemed like a reasonable penalty, given that it's above the minimum penalty, which we calculated to be the economic benefit plus staff costs, but below the maximum statutory penalty. So, $165 was somewhere in the middle, and we felt that the penalty, or the violations, rather, were not so egregious that the maximum was warranted. But the facts, as we understood them, made us feel that it was, the penalty should have been above the minimum. So that's how we came up with $165.
So in my studies, I've recognized, and this is not just a testimony, but a question.
Make it a short question, not a lot of preparatory stuff. Just ask the question.
Do you have a minor, moderate, and serious violations that have different numbers equated to the violation for your civil penalties? Have you reviewed your civil penalty process? And is there a minor, moderate, and serious violations?
Not for water rights. We exercise our enforcement discretion when calculating penalties.
So you can clearly say, is it clear to say that you just said you exercised discretion only and not any quantitative evaluation?
We calculated economic benefit and staff costs to establish what the minimum penalty ought to be. And we calculated what the statutory maximum penalty would be based on quantity diverted and days of diversion. And we used our discretion to reduce the penalty from the statutory maximum down to $165,000.
Oh boy, thank you. We'll move on to-
Okay, should we go on to Mr. Hess now, Mr. Gonzalez? All right, and let's go ahead and put up, it probably will help you with your questions. Let's go ahead and put up on the screen exhibit PT7, which were his slides. And it probably works best for you, Mr. Gonzalez, to go through those. And you obviously don't have to ask questions about each slide, but I think that might help you focus your questions for Mr. Hess.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Or, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, we now have up on the screen exhibit PT7.
Let me start with that first slide, the front cover slide. The picture of the property. Can you describe this first picture of our property, Mr. Hess? And how you came about it?
The source for that, I would have to double-check the source for that particular photo. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Would it be safe to assume that's a Google snapshot that anybody could see?
I didn't use Google in the report.
Mr. Hess, are you a licensed surveyor?
No.
Did you rely on records of survey for your investigation?
No.
Did you draw lines on maps in color representing an outline of my property?
Can you specify what you're referring to?
Did you review the operations and maintenance manual of the Castle Dam project?
Yes.
Did I give you, did Mr. Gonzalez give you any information about easements 108-E1?
Yes, that was in the response.
Did you give that information to your supervisors?
That information is, I believe that is in my report. Let me double-check on that real quick for you.
While you're double-checking, I'll, for time reasons, I need to ask you-
Wade-
You make a statement.
Mr. Lilly, I would like to object. If you- Mr. Lilly, I would like to object. If Mr. Gonzalez is going to ask a question, I'd like to at least allow the witness the opportunity to answer it.
Okay, so, Mr. Gonzalez, you did ask him, Mr. Hess, a question about easement one oh eight one, and he said he needed to look at the investigation report, which is exhibit P T twelve. So I think we do have to give him a chance to do that. So, Mr. Hess, are you looking at your investigation report, exhibit P T twelve?
I am.
And can you tell us, and we'll give you a minute, and, and I won't count this against your time, Mr. Gonzalez, but tell us when you get to the page that, that has the reference to this easement, and then we can put it up on the screen. That'll just make it a lot easier for all of us.
We may be able to start also, Mr. Lilly, with page one oh five of his investigation. It's a very colorful G I S map with the yellow line of Canal Creek on my property.
Okay, so let's do that. So Nicole, please put up exhibit P T twelve and then put up page one oh five. It's just a lot easier for all of us if we have these pages up. We can all be on the same page, so to speak. So she's getting it, just bear with us. It's a big file, so it'll take a minute to load onto her computer.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I think she's getting to one oh eight here. It's, that's, that's numbered page one oh eight. Mr. Gonzalez, were you in the, the PDF file page one oh eight? They're, they're not the same, the numbering is. So Nicole, go back a few, just go back one at a time. I think we can tell you, go back, a little bit more back, we should be able to get there. Keep going back.
I don't know where page this is.
Go back one, there we are, back to that one. What, is that the one you want?
Yeah, well, it looks reasonably the same, yeah. My information says one oh five, okay.
Yeah, we're, it's a little confusing, because at the, just for the record, at the bottom, this says page ninety-five, but at the top, it says exhibit P T twelve, page one oh one. But if this is the exhibit you want, go ahead and ask Mr. Hess your questions about this page.
Mr. Hess, is this part of your investigation?
Yes.
Can you read for me the first line, what your investigation says?
On this page?
Yes, please.
This depiction does not represent an official survey.
And does it also say that by law, only California licensed professional land surveyor or civil engineer licensed prior to nineteen eighty-two may perform the land surveys?
Yes.
Were you aware that Merced Irrigation District performed a survey, and did they give you that information?
That's, that's not in my testimony.
I'd like to object on the grounds that that question is particularly vague.
But, well, let's just ask it this way, just, I think I'll split it up. Mr. Gonzalez, I'll help. Mr. Hess, do you know whether or not M I D prepared a land survey of this area?
Uh, I'm unaware if they performed a land survey of this. I know that they performed a survey on Mr. Gonzalez's property.
Well, I think this, that the upper left-hand corner of this picture is Mr. Gonzalez's property.
It is his property in the upper left-hand corner, but this is, this is a different traverse.
What are you trying to say by this?
Okay, well, wait, wait, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm trying to help you here. Just tell us, Mr. Hess, what's your understanding as of what Merced Irrigation District did as far as a survey of the area with, involves Mr. Gonzalez's property. That'll, that should get us through this a lot quicker.
Not, not referring to this page, but the survey that I'm aware of?
Yes, just your understanding of what Merced Irrigation District surveys of this, of his land have been conducted.
I'm aware that in April of two thousand nineteen, M B K engineers performed a survey on Mr. Gonzalez's property. I'm not aware of another survey.
And was that done for Merced Irrigation District?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Gonzalez, I think that probably answers your question, but why don't you proceed now? I'm just trying to move this along.
Okay, let's just correct, thank you. Let's go back to the photo, the blurry photo.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be going back to exhibit P T eight, the first page, I believe.
That Mr. Cervantes did not want to answer to, can we answer, that was in Mr. Damon Hess's investigation?
Oh, okay, that, I'm sorry, that was not, that was in P T twelve as well. So I'm sorry, Nicole, this is back in P T twelve. I just had to close it. I apologize. If you can open P T twelve again.
I'm gonna need that investigation also.
Okay, and now try to go, again, the page numbering is off, but try going PDF files, about page sixteen, I think. If you can flip back to that. We had it up before, we'll try to get it again. Wait, 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 he said go back, right? Go forward. Is that the one, I don't think that's the one you want, Mr. Gonzalez. But I think it's back, fine, let her go back. I think we can get it. I know which one, Mr. Cervantes, look, just keep flipping back, Nicole, we'll get there. But you're going forward, you need to go back. There we go. Keep going back. We want to go till we get a twelve at the bottom.
Correct.
That one. Is that the one you want, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
All right, so please ask Mr. Hess your question about that, that page of exhibit. This is on the PDF files, page sixteen of exhibit P T twelve.
Yes, sir. Damon, the pixelated photo of six twenty-seven ninety-five, can you describe how you came about that photo?
I'm not, I don't understand the question. What do you mean, how I came about?
Where did you get that photo from?
That's a photo from Landstat five.
If we were to go to Landstat five right now, would it be any clearer?
No.
This is my exhibit thirty-two, and I know this might take time, Mr. Lilly. Can you see this on my screen?
Yeah, we can, we can have Nicole put up your exhibit. This will be Gonzalez's thirty-two. If you can, Nicole, please leave exhibit P T twelve open on your computer, because we may need to come back to it. But please put up exhibit Gonzalez thirty-two. It'll take her just a minute, but it's easiest to get it up there.
Mr. Lilly, we're pulling up the next exhibit. I've been keeping track of time on my phone, and I've been pretty conservative. I'm just asking because I'm trying to understand how much time Mr. Gonzalez is spending cross-examining each individual witness.
My notes is he spent eleven minutes so far with cross-examining Mr. Hess.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Lilly, forgive me.
While we're, while we're pulling up exhibits, the time spent pulling up exhibits, is that time counted against Mr. Gonzalez?
Well, we're gonna, it's not going to be that rigorous of timekeeping, Mr. Prager. So we'll play it by ear, and it depends. I don't want to penalize Mr. Gonzalez if it takes our staff longer to get an exhibit up. But on the other hand, I don't want this to go on forever. So please just bear with me. I'm balancing your concerns against his concerns, doing the best I can. So we now have exhibit Gonzalez thirty-two on the screen. So, Mr. Gonzalez, please ask Mr. Hess your question about this exhibit.
Okay. If I were to give you the Landstat number, it's up at the upper left-hand corner, and my eyes are aging, so forgive me. I can't read it, but I can assure to you that this is the same number that you have listed in your six twenty-seven ninety-five. Can your young eyes see the Landstat number, an upper left-hand number?
And we might be able to enlarge this a little bit, which might help us all. I don't know. Nicole will try to, there we go, that's a little better.
Okay, I, it might be difficult, and I don't want to be called a liar. But if you can look on page eleven of, which is a previous page to Mr. Hess's photograph of page twelve, he has the Landstat number noted in table one, a summary of retrieved remote sensing images. Maybe we should go to that, Mr. Lilly.
Mr. Gonzalez, I think this can go a lot faster if you just testify. This is about your exhibit. So when we get to your testimony, you can just tell us if those numbers are the same or different. That'll be a lot faster than trying to wade through these blurry exhibits. So unless you have some reason why you have to ask Mr. Hess this, I, I recommend that you do that. I don't think this is going to be a disputed point.
Right, I kind of have a reason, because he, because he, I think he swore to uphold the Constitution. And I think he swore to tell the truth. And what I'm trying to get at here is if they're the same, and I can guarantee you they are, because I double-checked it and triple-checked it. I guess in this circle, do you see water?
So, so, Mr. Hess, for the purposes of this question, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to assume these are the same Landstat figures. If it turns out that you have a question with that later on, you can bring that up. But assuming they're the same, can you answer Mr. Gonzalez's question?
I see something that could be water.
Does it look like the shape of the pond on Mr. Gonzalez's property?
You cannot tell from that picture.
You've looked at a lot of maps. How do I restate this?
I think he's told, told you all he can, Mr. Gonzalez. I think beyond this, you're gonna have, it's gonna have to be your testimony on this issue.
Very, very well. When Mr. Hess looked up the Water Codes, was he aware that code section that he's fining me for is for appropriators only?
So this is, tell him which section of the Water Code you're asking about, and then state your question.
Code section one zero five two, I believe.
And what is your question?
My question is, did he receive, did, Mr. Hess, did you receive my riparian water claim in your investigation?
Yes, it's in my report.
What page is your report show my riparian claim?
Yeah, and, Mr. Gonzalez, I don't want to belabor that, or I don't want you to belabor this, but it takes us a little time to put exhibits up, but appendix A of exhibit P T twelve, which starts on page thirty-four, and then that's the cover page, and then starting on page thirty-five, he, it does have a copy of his, of your initial statement of water diversion and use. So, do you have specific questions about that, that you need us to put up that page, or can we just agree that it's there?
We can agree that it's there if, if he'll admit that it's there. I always want to know, did he bring that to Mr. Cervantes's attention? Or their.
And that's a, that's a different question. So please answer that question, Mr. Hess.
It, it is, the riparian claim, the statement of initial diversion and use, is in my report. And that should have been reviewed by everyone. Or at least it's in the report.
Okay, then, to speed things up, did you review California codes, and I'll just ask him with, as a group, if it's okay with you, Mr. Lilly?
Please.
One zero one, I'm sorry, one hundred, one zero one, twelve, six, six, seven.
You refer to the Water Code?
Yes. Did you include those in your report?
I did not cite those codes in my report.
Okay. There's a map that you referred to, that you saw a survey. If I was in person, I would put this on the screen. And, Mr. Lilly, he referred to a map that he saw from M I D survey?
Is that, do you have an exhibit number for that?
No. Maybe in my cross-examine, should I do this in writing?
Well, I don't, is that one of your exhibits or one of the prosecution team's exhibits, or is it something new?
This is something that M I D produced.
Okay, what I suggest you do on that, Mr. Gonzalez, is include that in, in your rebuttal testimony that you submit. But it's gonna be a lot faster if you testify to that, rather than trying to ask Mr. Hess about a map that he may have ever seen.
Very well. Okay, the Crocker Huffman statement then, on page, gets highlighted in yellow in his investigation.
And what page you're on for this one?
Page one zero two. It's only excerpts of the Crocker Huffman.
Okay, let's try to go back to P T twelve to page one zero two and see if we can find it.
How many pages did he submit?
And I think this is, it should be numbered page eighty-nine, so we're getting there. That one, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
All right, please go ahead.
Mr. Hess, how many pages are there in the Crocker and Huffman transfer of deed to Merced Irrigation District?
I don't know off the top of my head.
How many?
Well, they're all, they're all in your report. Well, maybe they're all in your report. Let's just cut through the chase here. And we have that page. I have one, two, three, four, five, six pages from that indenture. But I, I guess the question, is your question, Mr. Gonzalez, are those six pages all of the pages of that indenture?
Correct, that's what I'm getting at. Are they?
Mr. Hess, can you answer that question?
No, I did, I did not include the entire recorded document in my report.
Is there a reason why you did not include all the document in your report?
Because there's only a certain portion that was relevant to the investigation.
For the record, there's a hundred and eighty-one pages of the document.
And that's something you can bring up on your testimony or your rebuttal, if you think it's relevant.
No, we need to go over the Stevenson, they have an allegation that there's an injured person, and how they came up with this hocus pocus hundred and sixty-five thousand. And that's important. My point is there is a email that needs to be addressed from Hashamatal to Damon Hess. Damon Hess included it in his report. And he included in his report Stevenson Irrigation District, Water District, that they were damaged. And Mr. Cervantes also alluded to the fact that there was injured parties.
Okay, do you need to get up the exhibit, or can you just ask him the question about his conclusion that Stevenson Irrigation District was damaged?
Sure, we could ask it that way.
That'll probably go a little faster. Why don't you just ask him your question about Stevenson? I think it's Water District, I'm not sure, maybe it's Irrigation District, yes, go ahead.
Hess, did you include the entire document of the Stevenson Irrigation District's agreement with Merced Irrigation District?
In my report?
Yes.
No.
Why? Why did you?
There's no reason to.
Do you know how many pages are in the Stevenson agreement?
Not off the top of my head, no.
How many pages did you submit as evidence?
I would have to look, can, can you tell me what exhibit you're referring to?
Okay. You referred to Stevenson having been shorted water because of my property. Maybe I'll ask you this question as I look for it. How many miles is my property from Stevenson? Do you know?
No, I'd have to look. No, I'd have to look.
Did you look? Before you did your investigation?
At where Stevenson Water District is? Yes.
Yes. Would it be reasonable to assume it's about forty miles away from my property?
I would have to look.
What would be your best guess at how many miles away?
I don't have a guess for that.
Have you reviewed maps of the Crocker and Huffman or the Merced Irrigation District?
What maps are you referring to?
In your report, did you spend three hundred and thirty two hours of time investigating this report?
This is a different question?
Yes, a different question now.
Did I spend three hundred and thirty hours on this report?
Yeah.
Uh, that's very conservative.
Very conservative. Where did you spend those hours at?
Can you clarify what you mean by that?
Did you spend time at M I D? The Merced Irrigation District Office?
I've never been to the Merced Irrigation District Office.
Have you ever been to my house?
Once.
How long were you here?
Probably two and a half or three hours, but in the house, probably only about fifteen minutes.
That's fair. Did you have trouble starting your car when you were at my property?
I did.
I'm sorry, I'm going to object on the grounds that this is completely irrelevant to the case.
I I think it's probably an interesting story, Mr. Gonzalez, but we don't have time for it. He obviously got his car started and got back here to Sacramento somewhere along the line. So why don't you move on?
Okay. He was notably nervous when he showed up and he had already visited the site.
I'd like to object that Mr. Gonzalez is again testifying during cross examination.
Yeah, we are, we understand, Mr. Prager. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prager. Mr. Gonzalez, please try to keep it to questions right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I know it's hard, but you have to just split it up between questions and your testimony.
After my testimony, do I get to ask more questions than if I if I, you know, his his testimony, Mr. Hess's testimony is a hundred and fifty pages long. Or do you know?
Yes, well, Mr. Mr. Gonzalez, you've had his report now for over a year. So I I think you've had a fair chance to try to distill your questions down to distinct questions. And, you know, and I I know this is important and there's a lot of detail. But on the other hand, a lot of things really aren't that relevant. So it's, we really do have to move this along. So do you have any more specific questions for him or should we move on to Mr. Elder?
Yes, yes, Your Honor, yes, Mr. Lily. I would just like to ask Mr. Hess about my deeds and the information that I gave him. So it'd be two questions. Is one, when you were at my house, did I offer to you information? Yes or no? Mr. Hess. Did I give you copies of my deeds of trust?
If you're referring to the copies of the deeds in your response, then I believe so. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
How did you get exhibit one, page number seventy six of my deed and your investigation? Maybe this would be better, Mr. Lily. While you're on this page eighty nine, can you continue back to page seventy four?
Okay, Nicole can do that. So please, let's go back to, I think it's the page seventy four with the numbering at the bottom.
On the bottom, yes, sir.
Okay, we're there.
No, that's not the one I have. It looks like a deed. It says grant deed on it. And it's in appendix.
Now, just go back, Nicole, to page sixty nine. I think that's the one you're talking about.
There you go.
Is this the one you're looking for, Mr. Gonzalez?
I believe so. One one six three two. Yes, sir. Mr. Hess, do you have that up in front of you? Can you see the grant deed?
Yes.
Did, how, where did you get this grant deed from?
The county recorder's office.
When you were at the county recorder's office, did you do a record of search for previous landowners?
I didn't do any record searches while I was there. I went there with document numbers to retrieve.
Okay. On page, the next page of your exhibit.
Okay, we can go to the the next will be page. Nicole's going to get there. It's page seventy six of PT twelve. What's?
Oh, Mr.
We'll go back, hang on, back one. That's the page you want.
Okay. That previous page is the front of the deed. Does that belong to Mr. Kevin Gonzalez? Sorry, I had to go to the next page.
Yes, this is the second page of that deed.
Of of whose deed?
The deed that we just looked at belongs to Kevin Gonzalez.
Thank you. Is Canal Creek mentioned in the first paragraph?
Yes.
Could you please read me parcel one if it doesn't take too long so that everybody can understand on record since this is only on a recording?
You want me to read the meets and bounds?
Yes. Are you familiar with meets and bounds?
Yes.
The first paragraph would be fine. Parcel one. For the record.
Says parcel one, that portion of lot ninety two, map of the Merced River Track in the county of Merced, state of California, as per plat recorded in book five of maps, page twenty five, records of said county lying north of Canal Creek, described as follows. Beginning at the north.
Wait, you don't, you don't have to read the the next paragraph. I think you just wanted the first paragraph.
Okay, I would like to see the, would you also read parcel number two, the first paragraph underneath parcel two?
I'd like to object. The document speaks for itself. If we're just going to begin reading entire documents into the record, I would suggest that we just move on to testifying.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, I think your point is that the descriptions of parcel one, two, and three, all the first paragraph of each one has a reference to Canal Creek. Mr. Hess, will you agree that the first paragraph of the description of each of these three parcels has a reference to Canal Creek?
Yes, Mr. Lily.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, I I think that covers this point. Is there anything else you need to ask about this deed?
There's one more important part, Mr. Lily. It says, beginning I paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six, six paragraph underneath parcel three. I'm sorry, underneath parcel three is the second paragraph. But the last one, I just say it if you want to read it. I was going to ask him if he would read that it says of intersection with said Canal Creek.
Yes, and I'm sure, Mr. Hess, do you agree that that paragraph also references Canal Creek?
Yes, Mr. Lily.
Okay, I think that probably takes care of this. Maybe we can move on.
I need to ask, Mr. Lily, did he review this information with his supervisor?
Okay, that's a fair question. Go ahead and answer that question, Mr. Hess.
I mean, this is in my report. I'm not. I I can't. I can't really answer the question affirmatively or not. I I don't know that I did or did not discuss this exact phrasing with my supervisor.
Well, you're pay, you're in, this is your investigation, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I think I'm done then with that, Mr. Lily.
Okay, that took half an hour. I gave you a little leeway and I'm sure Mr. Prager was keeping track of the time as well.
Your Mr. Elder is also.
So let's do, Mr. Elder, his testimony is a lot shorter. I really want you to try to complete his cross examination in fifteen minutes. It's three fifteen, so I want you to finish this by three thirty.
Can I ask for a break? I should have.
Yes. Okay, so let's do, it's it's good. We've been going for two hours and fifteen minutes. Let's take a break for ten minutes. Let's come back at three twenty five sharp. Everyone back at three twenty five sharp.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm back. It looks like Mr. Prager is back and incidentally, if anybody wants to take off their coats, please go feel free to do so. It's getting a little hot in my home office. So I did. So you all have permission to do that if you want to. Not that I couldn't force it anyway, but we can go that in level of informality for a hot day in July. So it looks like Mr. Elder is here. Mr. Elder, can you speak? I just want to make sure we hear you.
Yes, is that coming in okay?
That is perfect. Thank you. So Mr. Gonzalez, if you can go off mute, please feel free to start your cross examination questions for Mr. Elder. I have 3:26. So I'd like you to wrap this up in 15 minutes, which will be by 3:41.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. I found out that if you hold the bar down, it also unmutes. And then when you let go of the bar, it mutes.
We're all learning. So we understand. Please go ahead.
So Mr. Elder, how much does a riparian permit cost?
How much as a riparian? I have no idea. I don't work in water rights.
Do you know how much Mr. Gonzalez spent on permits and pipelines?
I do not.
Do you know? Do you know what size pipes I have installed on my property?
I do not.
Are you aware that I've paid $204,000 to Merced Irrigation District for permits, fees, fines for the same situation, the water purchase?
No.
Are you aware that I had meters metering my pumps?
I am not.
Are you aware of the expenses that I've incurred during this investigation and prior?
No, sir.
Did you take an oath of office to uphold the Constitution?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Lilly, I think we're getting the hang of things. I went quite a bit faster.
Yes, well, that's because you're asking good, short questions. It does make things go faster. So do you have any other questions for Mr. Elder or are we ready to move on?
I believe we're ready to move on.
All right. So let me just check here and see where we are. So I do have a couple of questions for each of the witnesses. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Cervantes. And let me get my copy of your testimony here, PT3. And maybe Nicole, if you can put up PT3, exhibit PT3 and page four. And while she's doing that, my question is actually fairly simple. Let me just make my notes here. My question for you, Mr. Cervantes, is can you give us? Yeah, there we go. Right there. Page four, paragraph 14. Your recommended ACL from the prosecution team is $165,000. And so far, all I've heard you say is, well, this is less than the maximum and more than the minimum. And it's our opinion of the appropriate amount. But is there anything more you can say about how the prosecution team arrived at this amount?
You know, other than us believing that the facts warrant a penalty above the minimum. No, we just felt like that was the, we believe that that was a reasonable amount, 165.
Okay.
It was more than the minimum and less than the maximum. We just thought that was a reasonably appropriate amount.
Okay. And then if you can just look down on that same page, and if we need to make it bigger, we can, although you can probably read it. Starting on line 13. It's this is talking about the, it says, the terms of the cease, it says, cease, desist order require that the diverter immediately cease the unauthorized diversion and use of water from Creek Canal and within one year, complete a project to render the dam incapable of storing water subject to the board's permitting authority. Do you see that? That sentence of your testimony, Mr. Cervantes?
I do.
And what do you mean by rendering the dam incapable of storing water subject to the board's permitting authority?
Sure.
Which I think you just went on mute.
So what?
Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
So what we meant by that is that the pond, as it's situated now, is unauthorized. It's storing water from an unauthorized diversion without an appropriative right. And so we need that abated. We need that threat of unauthorized diversion and storage abated. And we weren't prescriptive about how he would do it. That's, we wanted to leave options open for Mr. Gonzalez. So we didn't specify the manner in which we needed the threat of unauthorized diversion and storage abated.
Okay. But and then if you can just clarify, what do you mean by the dam? I'm just not aware of any dam there.
Sure. So what we're referring to as dam is the crown of the spoil pile or the crown of the embankment that was the soil that was excavated to make the reservoir to the toe of the reservoir itself.
Okay. So do you mean that on the, this is on the north side of the pond or the side toward the creek?
I believe it's the side toward the creek.
Okay, that's, I'm a little confused because I think that's a levy, isn't it? I'm not sure Mr. Gonzalez would have the authority to remove that levy. So I just need you to clarify what you're asking me to put in my proposed order.
What we're, we're discussing the part of the pond that has the pipe in it. And I believe that Mr. Hess will be able to more clearly answer your question.
All right. I'll just ask you, Mr. Hassan, and we'll shift over to your testimony in a minute. But please explain in more detail what exactly you're asking me to put in the proposed order about rendering what I'm going to call the pond inoperable.
Okay. We often use the phrase render the dam incapable of storing water because we're often dealing with onstream reservoirs. I believe that that may have, what may have been meant to be put in there was to render the reservoir incapable of storing water. And to clarify, that levy is not a project levy that that appears to be a thin embankment of native soil that was left there after the excavation.
So what do you want me to order?
To render the reservoir incapable of storing water that's subject to appropriation under Division two of the Water Code.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I still just don't understand what you want. Do you want me to order him to take out that embankment or something else?
We left that somewhat intentionally vague because we don't want to order Mr. Gonzalez to do anything that he cannot do. The thing that we need him to do is to stop diverting water that's subject to appropriation under Division two of the Water Code. So whatever way that would be satisfied, where it would be in compliance with the Water Code and also with the agencies involved that have jurisdiction over that, then that would be acceptable. But we're not prescribing a specific conduct.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate the clarification. So let's shift over to your testimony, which is exhibit PT4. We'll get it here in just a minute. And if we can go to page two of that. Yeah, good. Maybe down to paragraph, yep, down to paragraph four. But I'll just say, and if we need to, we can make it bigger. I had a little trouble following some of your citations, like here on line 12. There's a citation. It says PT12 at 19. And I think part of the problem is my paper copies don't have these, the header that's here on the electronic copies. But when you're referring to page numbers in PT12, are those the page numbers at the top or the page numbers at the bottom? Because they're different numbering sequences.
All of the page numbers in the document should be referring to the bait stamp pages at the top.
Okay, thank you. That that will help me a lot. I do want to make sure I'm always on the right page. Okay, so on that page in paragraph or in that same paragraph for line 14, starting at line 13, it says, the reservoir parcel contains a reservoir and both parcels contained almond orchards. And I'm just wondering why, and you use this term throughout your testimony, Mr. Hess, but why do you use the term reservoir for this pond?
Because it's storing water. We refer to anything that's artificially storing water as a reservoir. Which, which line did you say we were on, sir?
I'm sorry, if I wasn't clear, line 14 was just the first time I saw the reference to reservoir. It says the reservoir parcel contains a reservoir.
On page four?
It's the one that's right up on the screen right now, page two of your testimony.
Oh, okay, I apologize. It's a little clear on my, on my, okay.
It's, this is complicated, but it's page two of your testimony in line 14.
Okay, right.
Okay, and I was just confused. I always think of reservoir as something with a dam and a valve. But you're obviously saying you look at it as a broader term than just that.
Well, usually they do have a dam and and oftentimes they should have a valve or a drain of some sort. But that's for onstream reservoirs. There are also offstream reservoirs. It may or may not have a dam because if they're offstream, it's a completely different geographic configuration.
Okay. And just, I mean, Mr. Gonzalez, I think refers to it as a pond, which I, I mean, I'll just say, I think pond is a little, I'll just say more accurate term, but I understand where you're coming from for why you use the term reservoir. So let me just go forward to page four of your testimony. Nicole will move it to page four, but if you want to look at your copy because it's bigger and easier to read, that's fine.
Thank you, sir.
I'm down at paragraph 14, at the bottom of page four, which starts on line 26, 26 and a half. It says, during the inspection, I observed the reservoir is significantly deeper than the adjacent stream channel. And the reservoir is connected to Canal Creek through an open pipe extending from the bed of the stream through a levy into the reservoir. So my, and I think I have a pretty good understanding of the lay of the land from the pictures, even though I haven't been out there. But how much lower is the bottom of the pond, which you call a reservoir, than the bottom of the adjacent stream channel? Can you tell us what the difference in elevations are of those two?
I would need to look for that, but I believe it is. I would have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Can you give us, and I'm not, you know, I understand this is just an estimate, but can you give us any estimate?
If you can give me a moment, I can.
Please take a moment.
Okay.
And if you're looking at another source that's an exhibit, you can tell us which one it is and we'll put it up on the screen.
This is not an exhibit from my, from my testimony.
Okay, well, just go ahead and tell us what your, what the numbers are. And if necessary, we can ask you to submit the document.
It will be submitted in rebuttal.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's about eight feet.
Okay. And I mean, I'm not going to ask you to put it up on screen yet because we haven't downloaded them yet. But is there a rebuttal exhibit number that you're referring to to answer that question? Or a title of it so we can just look at it before we are next day of hearing?
One of the exhibits is PT53.
Okay.
And then there will also be something in my presentation, my oral presentation.
Okay. All right. Well, if necessary, we can come back to this. Thank you. I appreciate your, it's a little bit on the stump, but thank you for giving us the best estimate you can. So if we can move forward to page 14 of your testimony. And again, I'm going to read from my paper copy because my old eyes can't read the screen, but it's up there if anybody needs to look at it. And you can read along as you deem appropriate. I'm starting at line 20 on page 14. This is your testimony, exhibit PT4. And it says, I reviewed available nearby rain gauge data, upstream compliance inspections performed by the division, and the watershed upstream from Mr. Gonzalez's property and determined that in 2015, there was little to no natural flow in Canal Creek. It is reasonable to assume that as the drought continued in 2016 and 27, that condition remained during much of this dry summer months that the diverter diverted water for irrigation of this almond orchard, the natural flows in Canal Creek were de minimis. It is reasonable to infer that any water flowing in more than de minimis amounts in Canal Creek during the dry summer months is therefore not natural flow of canal, of the Canal Creek watershed. But instead, it's water being delivered by MID either to MID customers or other downstream water rights. Do you see that? But instead is water being delivered by MID either to MID customers or other downstream water rights. Do you see that?
Yes, sir.
And I, I'm just trying to get an understanding of this. Certainly in the dry years, there's less water. But I think somewhere else in your testimony, you say that Canal Creek does not have a very large watershed. And certainly not a, a Sierra type watershed. So is it fair to say that during the summer months? The summer irrigation season, there normally would be little to no natural flow water in Canal Creek?
Yes, that would be accurate.
And, and so, and of course, in a dry year, even less. But I'm just trying to get it as a general rules, is there probably very little natural flow water in Canal Creek during the summers of most years?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I do want to go back to page nine of your testimony. And this is paragraph 29 at the top of the page. Starting on, on line three in the middle of that paragraph. It says thus the water flowing in Canal Creek is likely subject to appropriation in accordance with the water code. And then it cites Water Code Section 1201. But I assume that would be only for water during, what I'll, I'll just say in general terms, the rainy season or the winter. There's not likely to be any significant amounts of water available for, for appropriation during the summer. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So, and then just so, so we're clear on, on the rules of the, the water board's rules. If, I mean, you've, you've testified or your testimony says that Merced Irrigation District. Historically has imported water into the Canal Creek watershed and conveyed it through Canal Creek to downstream customers. But as long as Merced Irrigation District imports that water with the intent. To serve it to downstream customers, that water is not subject to appropriation by others. Is that correct?
Yes, one second here. So. That, that would be in Water Code Section 1201, because that, that would be water that is appropriated. It's not available for appropriation because it's being conveyed to downstream users.
Okay, well, it's basically water that already has been appropriated, is that right?
Yeah, it's not appropriated twice.
Yeah, and it might, it's probably one of the different subdivisions. I think one talks about water that's already been appropriated. Another about water is subject to appropriation. But basically, water in Canal Creek in the summer is water that already has been appropriated. And it's not available for new appropriations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Lilly. I, I recall you saying that I would have objections later, but I'll have to object to that. I have records, I have references, case law. And. I, I have to object to that statement because it's not true. Actually, it's flooding right now.
Okay, that, and, and Mr. Gonzalez, I appreciate that, and that is certainly something. You can bring up either in your testimony today or if you need to during rebuttal, absolutely. And, and we will certainly be glad to receive your citations to case law on that. So, but bear with us, we can, we have to go one step at a time, but certainly we don't want to cut you off discussing that point later.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to just ask you, just, I'm, I'm almost done with my questions here, but a couple more. So hypothetically, Mr. Hess, if Mr. Gonzalez had a contract with Merced Irrigation District. They could enter into a contract where Merced Irrigation District would deliver water into Canal Creek upstream of his diversion. And then he could divert it from the creek. If, if they wanted to, they could enter into an arrangement like that. Is that correct?
I believe that that, that is, they could enter into an agreement for that, yes.
Okay, and if they did that, would he need his own water right? Or would that be water he would be diverting and using under Merced Irrigation District's water right?
Well, if he entered into contract, that would be contract water. So that would come out of the appropriation that Merced Irrigation District had. That would not require a license or permit.
I'm sorry, the what?
That would not require a license or permit. That would be already appropriated water, contract water.
Okay, thank you. So then just going forward to page 16. This is a different topic. I'm just going to look at, I just have a question about lines 22, excuse me, 20 through, looks like 22. And if you, I assume you have that there, it says. These documents lead me to conclude that water delivered under the MID and Stevenson Water District Agreement. Is at times used for wildlife habitat in the San Luis Wildlife Refuge.
I'm sorry, sir, was there, what was the question?
My question was, do you see where your testimony says that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm turning away from the microphone so I can read the exhibit, so bear with me. So now I, I do have a, there was a follow-up question I had on that, something I was wondering about if we can put up exhibit PT 31. I think Nicole's getting PT 31. And while she's doing that, you can look, I have, I just have a question about the aerial photo on the third page of that exhibit.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, good. So just flip to the third page if you can.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm asking Nicole to both. There, there we go. So this, frankly, this was very helpful. I appreciate you providing this aerial photo with all these legends. So people like me can understand where everything is. And I, I see in the right side, Gonzalez Properties and Canal Creek. And it looks like Canal Creek flows down into the San Joaquin River. Near or just, just upstream of where the map has the depiction Stevenson Water District. Is that true or, or am I missing where Canal Creek actually flows?
Well, Canal Creek is tributary to Bear Creek on the bottom.
Okay.
It's tributary to the San Joaquin, however, the, the water from Canal Creek can take various routes. Depending on where the water is used at and where it returns. There, there is a way for some of that water to return in the Merced River, which is what you were referring to at the top.
Okay, so, so it can go down Canal Creek, it can go down Bear Creek. Or it potentially could even go down the Merced River, just depending on the use and return flows?
Right, Canal Creek is tributary to Bear Creek. So Canal Creek would naturally flow into Bear Creek.
Okay, so here's my question, maybe this, this answers it. I see the San Luis National Wildlife Refuge here. And most of it seems to be upstream of Bear Creek. But I guess there's a little bit of Bear Creek that flows through the wildlife refuge. So is that where you're saying the water, at least in theory, from Canal Creek could be used at the wildlife refuge?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering, because from Canal Creek, it looked like it would have to flow upstream, but from what you're saying through Bear Creek, it would not. It could flow by gravity.
That can also be seen. In PT 32 on page 11 is the agricultural drainage. That's, that's the area that's marked in yellow in the previous pages on this exhibit.
Okay, let's just ask Nicole to put up PT 32.
It's not, it's not very much of the San Luis Refuge, but it is an area that was of concern.
Okay. And this, again, I'm grappling with page numbers, but she can put up page 11. Of the PDF file. Seven, eight. Okay, so this is, I think she just, right there, that's the one. So that's where you're talking about where the water could go. Into part of the, the wildlife refuge.
Yes, but the, the bounding box on this map roughly corresponds to the yellow box on the other exhibit that you were referring to.
Okay. And, and then just to clarify again, though, during the summer, if, if this is Canal Creek water that gets down here. That's Canal Creek water that Merced Irrigation District put in the creek, but not natural flow water from Canal Creek.
Correct. At the time it got here, it would either be water that is intended to go here to the, to the district. Intended for other downstream users or water that's been appropriated and returned to the system for, for further appropriation.
Okay, great. Thank you for your clarification. So I now just have a couple of questions for Mr. Elder. And we'll get exhibit PT. Five up there, if Nicole can do that, which I appreciate very much. Mr. Elder, are you, you're there. You're off mute, so that's good.
Yes.
And my question is about the EPA BEN financial model. If you can go to page two, Nicole, down at the bottom, I'm looking at lines, it looks like line 20 to 21. Which, and maybe a little farther. It says the, the BEN financial model provided by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Was used to compute the total economic benefit derived from this delayed cost. And this is the delayed cost of purchasing water. So now, Nicole, if you can please go to exhibit PT two. And page 19, I think this is the table, Mr. Elder. I just had a couple of questions about the meaning of this table. Or some of the entries in this table.
Okay.
PT two, page 19. Bear with us, we'll get there. There, that's the table. Excellent. So I was confused and you need to explain to me. There's, there are three columns here in the middle of the table, non-compliance date, compliance date. And penalty payment date. And I'd like you to explain to me what those mean.
Sure. So in this particular case, I was provided with the approximate water use on an annual basis. That was retroactively purchased from MID. And what I did is I, you know, without any further information about how the. I guess billing or payment structure of MID works, I made the assumption that payments. For the total water diversion would be paid monthly over the, what I would consider the dry weather period from April to September. So again, the, the approximate diversions on an annual basis were divided equally among those. Those six months, I was given sort of a start date for when they, the prosecution team members felt the. Diversion started to take place, that was the July 15th, 2015. And made the assumption that those purchases would subsequently occur on the first of the month following. For each, each relevant month within that, that dry weather period. The compliance date represents essentially. The date I was provided again by prosecution team. As to when all of those fees were backpaid to MID. And the penalty, so essentially what that does is it, it ends the non-compliance period for the purposes of economic benefit calculation. However, the recovery still is inclusive of some time value of money component. And so that is recovered under that penalty payment date. And so in this case, at the time that I, that I completed this analysis, the penalty payment date entered into that program was. February 28th, 2020. Again, this date was provided by prosecution team staff. In theory, if that, that date were to change, it would change the outcome of this analysis.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is then the. Your view of the economic benefit to Mr. Gonzalez is that he got the, and I'm just going to use the entry in the first row as an example. You're going to, your argument is he got the economic benefit of the time value of money of $8,030. Because he should have paid it on July 15th of 2015. And he actually paid it on January 15th of 2018. So is that, is that fair for the time value of money?
Yes.
And, and apparently you used a discount rate of 7.4%. Is that correct?
Yes, those are defaults built into the BEN economic model.
Okay, I was just going to ask, is there any, how do you come up with 7.4? That's a pretty steep discount rate in this day and age.
So it, there are a number of factors within the BEN model. They use a contractor to put this model together. It's used in water quality cases throughout the country. It is inclusive for this particular entity, which is a non-corporation. It's based on a number of factors, again, that are sort of running in the background of the model. Essentially what returns are expected of, again, those sort of non-corporate for-profit entities.
Okay, and then, so I assume then you get a benefit, economic benefit, and then somehow you move that forward with a discount rate to get to 2020. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm understanding I'm oversimplifying what's a fairly complicated model, but I want to try to understand it. So, and you have some amounts here, which I see, you know, three entries for $8,000 and then several for 1,205. So just in rough terms, the total here is about 30 or somewhere between 30 and $35,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, and I think you testified in response to Mr. Gonzalez's cross X questions. That you were not aware of, of how much he actually paid Merced Irrigation District for this water with penalties. Is that correct?
I, I think his question included not only, you know, and I'm not 100% sure if what he was asking was inclusive of these retroactive payments. But he also included additional penalties and. Permitting fees and, and of the sorts that I was not privy to as part of my analysis.
Okay, and, and again, I, I understand you don't know this for a fact, but assuming hypothetically. That his statement in his testimony, he hasn't testified yet, but in his proposed testimony. Is that he paid Merced Irrigation District a total of two, approximately $205,000. For this water, including their penalties and other charges. Does, does that affect your conclusion as to what his economic benefit was from diverting this water?
I wouldn't consider penalties paid to, to any other entity to be factored into economic benefit. I, I kind of think of it as, you know, an illegal disturbance of a, of a property. Your economic benefit of, you know, perhaps growing something on that property that wasn't permitted to begin with. Shouldn't be affected by potential remediation expenses to return that property to, to its, you know, original condition.
Okay. But, but amounts he paid that were not penalties, that, that is something that should go into an economic benefit analysis?
Potentially, I, you know, it was my understanding at the time of those diversions. That his, his current method of diversion or his current method of obtaining water from MID was not a reality. It was not possible, which is why my analysis is, is inclusive of this essentially a water delivery system. From another point of connection with MID.
Okay. So let me just ask you. Let's see here. If, while we're on this same PT two, I think it's the next page, is page 20. And this is the economic benefit analysis for the. The pipeline, or at least a, a potential pipeline. Could you just explain what your analysis is for this?
Sure, so there, there is, I, I believe it's the following page that, that outlines essentially the cost estimation side. The assumptions made to basically cost out a lateral system for. What my understanding is would have been the appropriate connection point to MID. Which I believe is up, up to the north of the property. And so, you know, essentially based on many assumptions that not only I determine myself through. You know, general industry practice with construction and costing, as well as some information relayed through. you know, general industry practice with construction and costing, as well as some information relayed through prosecution team members, I was able to cost that project out to approximately $60,000. Running it through the BEN model, as you can see here, the ultimate economic benefit is approximately $37,000.
And again, is this because of a time value of money, or is this an avoided cost assumption?
So there's, there's a, it's a good question. There's a, there's a couple of things that are happening in the background here. The most important of which is essentially the potential tax deductibility of compliance expenditures. So in this case, we are, you know, I'm assuming that Mr. Gonzalez is a for-profit entity, and he potentially could utilize these types of expenditures to reduce his tax liability. And BEN incorporates that into the model. So there, there is a time value of money component. If I were to say that he, that these expenses were not tax deductible, that approximately $60,000 in terms of time value ultimately being recovered in February of this year, you would actually see it being higher than the total cost, right, which would make sense. He benefited from, you know, in this case, about five years of you know, avoiding to have to recover that, that, that money. In this case though, BEN is actually incorporating a tax rate for Mr. Gonzalez, which at, at the time of, in 2015 would have been higher than it is today, the, the tax rate, as we all, you know, saw a 2018 tax cut. And I believe the, the going rate was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 46% when you factored in both federal and California taxes. So that's where you see essentially that his actual out-of-pocket benefit here is actually lower than the cost of the cost of the actual, you know, at the time of purchase, so to speak.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate that explanation.
It's actually why you see the negative numbers that you saw on the previous slide.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I get, my question is, I, I think, and again, we'll get to Mr. Gonzalez with his testimony, but um, I think he's testified that he ended up putting in a pipe to get, get water from the MID lateral. And if that in fact is the case, does that change your analysis? If, I mean, let's just say hypothetically, he, he in fact paid for and installed a pipe in 2018 or 2019, where you said he should have installed it in 2015, would that change your analysis of this economic benefit?
It, it could. And, but it's my understanding that where he is diverting water now, or at least as of 2018, was not a, a
Again, you have to face the microphone. I'm sorry to not be able to hear you.
Maybe, is it working better now?
Yes.
Where he's, where he's currently diverting water, or where he was diverting water in 2018, it is my understanding that that is not an appropriate connection point in 2015. If that, if that assumption is incorrect, then it is possible that it would change essentially this analysis.
Sorry, I don't understand that. Um, if the, the point is, if he needs to get water from a Merced Irrigation District lateral to his orchard, what difference does it make for your economic benefit analysis where he has a connection to the MID lateral and where the pipe goes? It seems to me like all that matters is the cost of the pipe.
It, it is, but at the time of the violation, my job is to assess at the time of the violation, what was reasonable and feasible and authorized to actually connect to a legal water purveyor. And so the information I was provided is that a connection point was located to the north of his property. That was the appropriate connection. There were no other alternatives.
Okay, so the alternatives would factor in because they might have different costs if the pipe was a different length.
That's true.
Okay, I, that, that does make sense. Thank you.
Mr. Lilly, this is Mr. Gonzalez. I've been trying to bite my tongue and it might be in rebuttal. Best suited.
I think it probably will be.
Okay.
Or in your testimony, you, you have done your testimony, but you will have a chance for rebuttal as well. So please be patient. I realize you've had to hear a lot, but you will get your chance. Okay. And that is all the questions I have of these witnesses. And I do appreciate all of you explaining your testimony. It's really helpful to me. So with that, before we move on, Mr. Prager, do you have any follow-up redirect questions you would like to ask any of your witnesses?
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. I do. I have a few questions for Mr. Cervantes.
Okay, please proceed.
Mr. Cervantes, in, in a few questions from Mr. Lilly regarding the proposed, the prosecution team's proposed penalty, you testified that you felt like $165,000 was reasonable. I want to ask you a couple of questions about how you got to that conclusion. So the first question is, can you give me a rough ballpark, or if you happen to know the exact number of what the prosecution team calculated the maximum statutory civil liability is?
I don't remember the number offhand, but I want to say it was close to 400,000.
Okay, if I told you that it was 471,000, does that sound right to you?
That sounds right.
Okay. And there was a, a, a minimum penalty that the prosecution team calculated as well, correct?
That's right.
Can you tell me?
80,000?
Yeah, that's about, that sounds about right to me.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. Did you say approximately 80,000, Mr. Cervantes? Thank, thank you. Again, you're fading in and out, so try to fade in.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think in your written testimony, you discussed two components to your calculation of the minimum penalty. Can you tell me more about what those components are?
Sure. Well, I'll, I'll discuss, you know, our, our general authority, which is the water.
Well, first, first, just tell me about the, the minimum penalty factors.
Okay. The, the two factors that, that we used to quantify the, the minimum penalty was the staff costs to bring the, the violator into compliance, which he's still not into compliance yet, and the economic benefit. And those are the two factors we use to, to calculate the minimum. We use those factors because we can objectively quantify them.
Right, as opposed to the other factors that you evaluated?
That's right. The other factors being the extent of harm caused by the violation, the nature and persistence of the violation, the length of time the violations occurred, and any corrective action that the violator may have taken, which in this case is, is none.
And those factors, I think you just said, aren't quantitative.
Correct, they're not. Another factor that we took into consideration as a relevant circumstance was that these unauthorized diversions occurred during a drought.
Okay. Would you say that all of those factors went into account in your development of the proposed penalty?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, so you don't have any redirect for any of your other witnesses?
Nope.
Okay. So let's go forward. Oh, before we do, Mr. Gonzalez, I do have to give you an opportunity if you, to ask if you have any follow-up questions, but please limit them to just questions and just covering the topics that I covered in my questions and that Mr. Prager covered in his. And you don't have to ask any questions. I know there are a lot of things you want to make comments on, and you will get a chance to. But do you have any clarifying questions for any of these witnesses, based on what I asked them and what Mr. Prager asked? Ask Mr. Cervantes.
Yes, Mr. Lilly. Just one moment. Okay, I sent in my financial information to their office. At what point do they think I didn't pay? At what point do they think I'm non-compliant? When I've spent over $80,000 on lateral A, and I've spent over $50,000 on lateral seven, which is indeed, not just indeed, but indeed of trust on my property that MID refused to deliver water through. Did they take that into any evaluation? And did they even come to me to ask me those questions? Because MID had that information.
I'd like to.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to help this move along here and avoid Mr. Prager's objections, but I, I think there is a kernel of a legitimate question there.
Mr. Lilly, I would like to, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I know you didn't want me to object.
Go ahead.
Something that you may not know is that Mr. Gonzalez's question involves documents and discussions that occurred during confidential settlement negotiations that are not a part of this hearing. There are no exhibits discussing it. So it's outside the evidentiary record entirely.
Okay, well, that, I appreciate your alerting me to that. That's important. And that may affect whether or not they can answer the question. So for Mr. Hess, who just disappeared, hopefully he's going to come back. Or Mr. Elder, there he is, actually, or potentially Mr. Cervantes, but I think it's probably Mr. Hester, Mr. Elder. Outside of settlement discussions, were you aware, and let's split it up. Were you aware of when Mr. Gonzalez started paying MID for water that it was receiving from MID as opposed to diverting water from Canal Creek?
I'm aware that that was part of an ongoing litigation in Merced Superior Court with MID. So there were charges that were made, and I believe Mr. Gonzalez did pay those, and then was litigating with MID over that exact issue.
Okay, that's charges, but you know what year he started? And I was gonna ask him this when I started asking him questions, but do you know when he started receiving water from MID and stopped diverting from Canal Creek? And if you don't know, that's fine, but if you do know, outside of these settlement discussions, please let us, let us know.
Is he frozen?
I'm afraid, Mr. Hess, you may have frozen. You're not moving anymore.
Yep, I see the same thing.
Okay, and I, I'll just ask, Mr. Elder, do you happen to know about this while we're trying to unfreeze Mr. Hess?
You know, aside from being provided the, the date that Mr. Gonzalez retroactively paid for the MID purchases or unauthorized divergence, I, I'm not privy to any other information.
Okay. And, and I don't know, Mr. Cervantes, do you know anything more about this?
I don't, no.
Okay. Unfortunately, Mr. Hess seems to have lost his connection, but Mr. Gonzalez, I
He's calling back. I'm sorry to interrupt. He's calling back in right now into Zoom.
Okay. And, and I'll just say, Mr. Gonzalez, I understand your point, and you've made this point in your testimony, and you will be able to talk about that. And, and I certainly think it's important, particularly on the issue of what might go into a cease and desist order, the fact that you are now receiving water from MID, and, and under civil penalties, corrective action is a relevant matter. But I'm not sure what the prosecution team knew and when they knew it is going to further this discussion very much. So we'll see if, if Mr. Hess can hook back in, because he did get cut out. But I, I just want to tell you, I think we've probably covered this pretty well. And, and while we're waiting for him, just tell me, do you have any other questions or topics you want to cover with these witnesses?
I believe I do. Is this a cross to a cross, they call that?
Well, it's, it's called recross, and it's, it's limited to just the questions I asked and Mr. Prager asked. And we didn't ask very many. So you, it's, you're not allowed to just sort of start over here.
Okay, I'm, I'm probably not prepared, because I would run on, and I apologize. Yeah, I've got to ask my wife.
Yeah, I think we've probably covered this pretty well, so I, I'd suggest we move on. I'm going to talk about exhibits with Mr. Prager now, and I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Prager, I have in my files two large paper maps. They're approximately 11, no, approximately 17 by 34 inches, and they don't have any numbers on them. And I'm wondering if those were things you filed with my office?
That's a good question.
Let me, let me I want to make sure they end up in the right place here. Let me tell you what they are. That might help you.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
It's a multi-color map at the top. It says California State Engineering Department Detail Irrigation Map, Merced Sheet.
I don't recall submitting a prosecution team exhibit that looks like that, unfortunately.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez, did you submit this to me?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, that answers that. Thank you, Mr. Prager. You're off the hook on that one. We'll cover that with Mr. Gonzalez's question. And again, they don't have any labels, so I'm, I'm doing the best I can here. And then also, there's one here called, it's, it's an old topographic map. Is that the same thing, Mr. Gonzalez? Did you submit that?
Yes, sir, I did. That'll be part of my testimony and my research that I've done for Riparian Right.
Okay, that's fine. You don't, you don't need to go into details now. So did you send copies of these exhibits to Mr. Prager?
Yes, sir, I believe so. I sent hard copies.
Okay, and I don't know, Mr. Prager, do you recall receiving those too?
If, if Mr. Gonzalez sends something hard copy, I did not receive it. It's quite possible that because of the fact that we all work from home, that I, I haven't been in the office in over a month, it's quite possible that it's sitting in my inbox. But unfortunately, I was not aware that I was slated to receive anything in hard copy. So
Okay.
Those maps are completely new to me.
Okay, well, it's pretty clear we're going to be going on for another hearing day, so hopefully you'll have a chance to check with your either your staff or yourself can go into the office and check and see if, if you've got papers. And these are, there's really no way he could have PDF'd these and uploaded them. They're too big for that. If worse comes to worse, we'll have my staff figure out how to make copies of them. We'll get them to you.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll address that, but they're not yours anyway. So you're off the hook for having them labeled as your exhibits. So the other two housekeeping matters I have for you, Mr. Prager, which I know are yours, you identified or designated state water board order WR 2004-0004 as PT exhibit 36 and submitted it by reference.
That's correct.
Which, I mean, frankly, it would have been a lot easier if you just had submitted a PDF of it, but I, I downloaded a copy of that and we'll add it as a PDF to the prosecution team exhibit folder as exhibit 36 on our FTP site. And that's, that's not a big problem. I do have a bigger problem, though, with PT 38, which is state water board order WR 2019-0149.
Yes.
And the problem is that when I went to the state water board's website for wire right orders, this exhibit is not posted there. There may be issues with accessibility requirements or something, but for whatever reason, 2019 orders, there are only three of them posted, and this is obviously number 149. So the simplest way to deal with this would be if you have a PDF of that, if you can upload it to the AHO FTP two site, then we'll post it and make sure it ends up in the exhibit file. Can you do that?
I will do that immediately after this hearing. I'll also do the same thing for state water board order WR 2004-0004.
Okay, that, that just saves us. Then we know we got it right. And when you do that, label the files as PT 36 and PT 38. And when you do that, label the files as P T Thirty-Six and P T Thirty-Eight.
I will.
So we know where they go, thank you. Um, so with that, Mr. Prager, we have exhibits. Make sure I have the right numbers here. We have P T one through P T Thirty-Eight. And would you like to offer those into evidence at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any objections to these exhibits coming into evidence?
Well, I'd have to say yes, because I had trouble downloading those. I, I couldn't open them.
Did you, you couldn't open any of them or just some of them?
I opened some of them. I'd have to see which ones you're referring to. Their web, your website timed out. I live in the country and I don't know if it was my um con, uh, what do you say, website? Or if it was yours, but I could not download the one you're referring to.
Okay, so here's what I suggest you do. We, we've posted them all to the A H O F T P site, except for Thirty-Six and Thirty-Eight, which we will soon. Probably Monday will be before we get to that, but we'll do it as soon as we can. Um, I recommend that you work, Mr. Gonzalez, on downloading those. Um, you know, I think you can, I think the key is not to try to keep reading them from the F T P site, but to download them to your computer. You know, and if you need to do it one at a time, it'll take a little while. There are thirty-eight of them, some of them have big files, but um, I think that's gonna be the best way to proceed. Um, I'm gonna give you a chance to object to those before I rule on whether or not they're admitted into the record. Um, I will advise you that objections have to be based on legal rules. And I know you're not a lawyer, but you, you can't object to something just because you don't like it or you disagree with it, or you know, they think their statements in it that aren't true. That just goes to the weight of the evidence, but not to whether or not it's admissible. But I'm gonna give you a chance to do that uh before I make a final ruling on, on whether or not these exhibits will be admitted into evidence. So is that clear?
Yes, sir, that's clear, thank you.
So I wanna talk about where we go from here. Um, we do have, we clearly are gonna need more time. Um, because we have Mr. Gonzalez's summary of his testimony. Um, and of course, he has a lot of exhibits as well. I'm sure Mr. Prater will have questions for Mr. Gonzalez on cross-examination. I'm sure I will have questions as well. Um, and then we'll have to go through that process. Um, and then I noticed during the break, I checked, Mr. Prager, you, I did see, I appreciate you letting me know that you uploaded about thirty rebuttal exhibits, which clearly you're gonna want to go through. Uh, and, and there were, I think, testimony of at least two witnesses, some of which was fairly long. Um, so that's gonna take some time, and of course, you have a right to do that. Um, so we'll need to go through that. And then, Mr. Gonzalez, you may have some, you may want to submit some rebuttal as well. And again, keep in mind, it's, we don't want to open this up to new topics. But if there are things that you think that the prosecution team has said in its testimony or exhibits that you want to respond to, then you're allowed to do that. So we have right now two hearing dates set for July thirty and thirty-one. Uh, we can resume then if the parties want to. Um, if the parties want to resume sooner, we can try to find a date. We don't have to find a hearing room anymore, which was our constraint before. But let me, since we're starting with you, Mr. Gonzalez, let me ask you whether you want to try to find a date either next week or earlier the following week, next week being July twenty through twenty-four or the following week. I, I almost cringe to ask this because with everyone's calendar, it's probably gonna be next to impossible to find a date. But do you have a preference between resuming some date before July thirtieth? Or would you like to resume on July thirtieth?
I would like to resume on July thirtieth because I've scheduled.
Okay, and that, and I, so I won't even ask you, Mr. Prager, because we only could go earlier if both parties agreed. And they, and he's not. So we will start again on July thirtieth. Um, that is our next scheduled hearing date. We are starting at nine thirty on that date, so please make sure, not one o'clock, but nine thirty. That, again, is an artifact of when we can reserve hearing rooms, but that's where we are. So we will do that. Mr. Gonzalez, I strongly recommend that between now, that's thirteen days from now, that you prepare some slides or outlines. They don't have to be fancy, but in any outline form you can, bullet points and so forth, but similar in the format to what the prosecution team's witnesses prepared that will help you summarize your testimony. It'll help you hit the high points and not drone on forever, which will start causing impatience by me and by Mr. Prager. Um, and frankly, it will make your, your presentation a lot more effective. So I gave them roughly thirty minutes for an opening statement and to provide their testimony, and they were actually shorter than that, um, which I appreciate. So thirty minutes absolute max. I'm gonna be pretty rigorous about this because I think you can summarize your testimony in a lot less than that. But please try to get some, some slides. And if you can send them by either email to Mr. Prager and me, or if they're voluminous, upload them to the F T P site and tell us by email so we know and we'll get them out. But let's try to target you doing that by Monday, July. Um, well, actually, we should probably do that sooner. I want you to do that by Friday, July twenty-four, a week from today. And again, it's just short summary slides, so that's your deadline for that. Do you understand that?
Mr. Lilly, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, I just need a, a clear clarification on uh what appears to me to be a major deviation from the hearing procedures. Um, Mr. Gonzo, uh, just, okay, so first point of clarification. Are you rescheduling Mr. Gonzalez's case in chief testimony for another date?
I'm scheduling it for the next available scheduled hearing date, which is July thirtieth. We can't, we can't, there's no point in fitting, starting at four thirty on a Friday afternoon. So we're starting on the next.
Next point of clarification is, are you now allowing Mr. Gonzalez to resubmit new case in chief presentation slides a month after he was already supposed to have done so?
They're not new, he never submitted any. I'm giving him more time.
My understanding, I have reviewed Mr. Gonzalez's case in chief presentation.
Yes. My point is.
He submitted it at the same time limit that the prosecution team did. Are you now giving him an opportunity to augment or resubmit new case in chief presentation slides?
I'm giving him a chance.
It involves Pete or Gonzalez's Exhibit Thirty-Eight.
Okay, let's get, be clear about this. Um, when we had the original schedule, there was a deadline for submitting exhibits, which both parties met. There was a subsequent date for submitting summary slides, which the prosecution met and Mr. Gonzalez did not meet. Are we, so far, are we on the same page? He never submitted summary slides.
That's not my understanding of the timeline.
Please, what am I missing here?
I believe that Mr. Gonzalez has submitted PowerPoint slides, summary slides of his case in chief presentation. They're roughly, it's a PowerPoint, it's roughly thirty-six slides.
I, uh, then that may be important because I don't think I have that.
I've seen them and reviewed them. I pulled them off of the A H O F T P site, I believe.
Okay, let's, we better get this cleaned up. Thank you, I appreciate your clarifying this. Can you tell me what exhibit number they are on the, and we'll, we'll, we'll go through this. We wanna get this right. Um, go to the A H O F T P site and I'll do the same thing. And let's, we can just minimize, whatever you do, don't sign off.
Um, yeah.
And let's, tell me what exhibit number it is, and I may have missed it. And if I did, I apologize.
It's Exhibit Gonzalez Thirty-Nine.
Hang on here. Cause I only had one through thirty-eight, but I may have missed it. Right you are. I'm sorry, I, when I, it's probably because I don't have paper copies. And when I was going through this last night, I only had one through thirty-eight. And that's all that's in the exhibit index. So let me look at those. Okay, so I think, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Prager may have saved you some work. I stand corrected, there's exhibits of slides one through thirty-six. So those, thank you, Mr. Prager. I'm sorry, I was confused about that. I can understand why you were concerned. Um, so, Mr. Gonzalez, we do have P T Thirty-Nine already. So that will be what you will use to provide your summary when we resume the hearing. Is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, good. And that's what, that's thirty-six slides. That gives you almost one minute per slide, not quite. But I want you to be able to do that in thirty minutes max. You probably should be able to do it in less than that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
And that's where we'll start. Um, sorry, Mr. Prager, I can understand your concern. Thank you for helping me with that. It's, this is part of the problem with working from home. I don't have everything in front of me. Um, but that's what we'll do to start. And then, so, and then we'll, we'll figure out about the two big maps. Maybe, Mr. Prager, you can check with your office and let us know if you have those. Hopefully somebody can check and hopefully you have the paper ones. If not, we'll figure out what we need to do to make sure you get them. And we will give them exhibit numbers because I don't think they have exhibit numbers yet. Um, there's one other thing. Exhibit Gonzalez Thirty is the Corps of Engineer Manual, which is about three inches thick. And I know that that is posted to the F T P site. So, Mr. Prager, I'm sure you have a PDF of that. Um, but, Mr. Gonzalez, the, the paper copy you submitted to me has about fifteen little green tabs on that. And did you submit anything with similar green tabs to the prosecution team? So they would know what you were tabbing for me?
It was too large and I submitted electronically. And I believe I did ship a hard copy at the same time I sent those maps. So um, your green tabs, I mistakenly, those are my notes. Um, those should have been my copy. I gave you my copy.
Okay, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna just take off all those green tabs. That'll make it a lot simpler. I haven't looked down yet. So then, Mr. Prager will have the same file you have. And.
That would be fine. Uh, you have.
I think there may have been another little glitch. There's, there's some piles, some papers at the end of that binder that I have, Mr. Gonzalez, would say History of Merced Irrigation District and a few other things. Were these things that were supposed to just be in your file and not in the one you sent to me? Cause they're not, except, they're not Gonzalez exhibits in any of them.
Those are, um, for my testimony, those are the history of Merced Irrigation District and.
Okay, my question is, have you labeled those as exhibits?
No, I did not.
Okay, I'm gonna just have my office mail those back to you. They're not, because Mr. Prager doesn't have them and it's, we don't want me to have anything that he doesn't have.
So it's fine.
Those will be mailed back to you. Okay, that takes care of that. Here, incidentally, is the binder with all the sticker tabs on it, in case you care. I'm gonna take all those off and throw them away. Um, so we'll go forward with that. That takes care of that housekeeping. Um, all right, so the only other thing I wanna talk about today is rebuttal. So, Mr. Prager, you have submitted thirty rebuttal exhibits. You uploaded them to our F T P site with testimony of two witnesses and summary slides. Um, can you tell us how much time you think that will take to present your summaries of those?
Yeah, um, I'm pretty sure. Okay, so there, so let's start uh methodically. There are two separate witnesses who will be presenting rebuttal testimony. The first is Brian Coats, the second is Damon Hess.
Okay.
Brian Coats will be presenting testimony, um, and his will take about ten minutes of summary presentation. And Damon Hess, he, he will also have a summary presentation that his, his takes a little bit longer, about fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll give you half an hour total. Um, you can have a short opening statement to explain what the rebuttal is rebutting, if you need to.
Fair enough.
Okay, I'm just writing this down.
Um. I have a question about procedure for rebuttal. Um, we're, we're, we're deviating a little bit from what I think I, is normal practice for water rights enforcement hearings. Um, where it sounded like at the beginning of the, of today's proceedings, um, you were going to allow Mr. Gonzalez to review rebuttal testimony prior to us submitting it. Is that correct?
That is my plan, since you've posted it now, yes. And I frankly, if you hadn't posted it now and you'd submitted it and gave it on the spot, I probably would have given him time to review it and come back on a subsequent day to cross X. Cause it's pretty, it's pretty challenging to review all that stuff and ask cross-examination questions on the fly.
So uh, my question and my request is that if Mr. Gonzalez is going to submit rebuttal testimony as well, that he do so in a timely fashion that allows the prosecution team enough time to also review his rebuttal testimony so that we can have some parity there?
Of course, that's, that's, I was gonna allow that. Um, and that's a, that's a reasonable request. Um, as I, as I say, my goal is to get all of the information in the record. I don't want any tricks either way. And so that's perfectly reasonable. So, Mr. Gonzalez, um, again, rebuttal is limited just to responding in your case, to what the prosecution team has put off, put forward in its testimony exhibits. And you may have some additional, you may or may not have any additional exhibits. Frankly, we've, we've got, I have a feeling we have everything in the record already that could be relevant to this matter. But, but I may be surprised, there may be something more. But um, if I give you until, well, let's see, we will post those on Monday, the twentieth. If I give you until Friday, July twenty-four, will that, oh, wait. Excuse me, that you don't need, that, that, this, this is rebuttal to the exhibits that the prosecution team has already posted. So you already have those. So, and, and you said you've had some trouble downloading them, but you may have at least been able to get to some of that. So I'm gonna give you until July twenty-four to post to the F T P two site, H O F T P two site, any rebuttal exhibits and testimony that you want to. And again, with the caveat, it's gotta be rebuttal. It can't just be new stuff. And I haven't read what the prosecution team has submitted, but Mr. Prager knows these rules pretty well. Um, and I'm trusting that what he has submitted is rebutting what you have previously submitted. Um, so it's gotta be rebuttal, this thing, otherwise it would go on forever. But I will give you until July twenty-four, four P M, to post um, your rebuttal on the A H O F T P site. And then we'll try to get it over to the A H O F T P one site so that Mr. Prager and his colleagues can download that uh on Monday morning. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir, I will shoot for it.
And again, it doesn't need to be a lot. Just because Mr. Prager submitted thirty exhibits doesn't mean you have to. We, the winner in this is not the person or entity that submits the most exhibits. I can assure you, we, we are somewhat more sophisticated than that. Um, so don't feel like you have to meet him with volume. But if you have something that you think is important to respond to what he has done, then please do that. So then, what we'll do is you can, we'll have Mr. Prager. So, excuse me, just a minute, I just wanna summarize what, what I'm envisioning for the thirtieth. Mr. Gonzalez's direct testimony, Mr. Prager's rebuttal, and Mr. Gonzalez's rebuttal. And we'll see, if we have to, we'll go forward on the three first. So, Mr. Prager, what have I, what do you wanna say now? What have I missed? So, Mr. Prager, what have I, what do you want to say now? What have I missed?
I would like the prosecution team to have the ability to amend their rebuttal submissions up until July fourth at four P M, the same deadline as Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I assume you meant July twenty-four, but.
Yeah, did I say July fourth? Sorry.
You did. That's a holiday long gone. We're, we're past that. So, yeah, and that's, that's fine. Again, don't feel like you need to, but if you do, fine. I, you know, at some point, my colleagues are going to have to read all this stuff. So we're, we're getting a little overwhelming. But if you think you need to submit more, you have till July twenty-four.
I don't plan on submitting any more. I may revise or clarify some rebuttal testimony such that it is easier for you and your staff to understand.
Okay, and if you need to do a revised exhibit, just submit it as the same exhibit number, put revised at the end so we know it'll supersede the one you've previously submitted. But, but that's reasonable for you to both to have that same deadline for that, July twenty-four. So, yes, go ahead.
Another question. I need time to see what he submitted because if they get extra chance to revise off of my questions, that's a little bit of trickery, as far as I'm concerned. And he's got a whole team. And I don't think that's fair.
All right, so here's the situation, Mr. Gonzalez. He does have a whole team and you have one person, and that's, you know, I'm sorry, that's, that's the way it is. You know, I understand there's a disparity there, and certainly I've been trying to take that into account and help you through this. What you're rebutting now by the twenty-fourth is what he submitted about a month ago and has been posted on the FTP site for a long time. So it's, it's not something new. If, you know, at some point, we're going to close the loop. If, if he submits something new on the twenty-fourth that you think you have to respond to, or you submit something on the twenty-fourth that he thinks he has to respond to, I'll talk about that. I mean, at some point, we have to end this process, or it'll go on forever. And, you know, you have to get an order out here. But I think we're being fair for both sides to submit your rebuttals, both by the twenty-fourth, and to have our hearing on the thirtieth, and if necessary, the thirty-first. And at that point, we'll talk about whether or not we need any other rounds. Okay?
Okay, thank you. That's fair.
All right, and, Mr. Prager, same, same, obviously same for you. I'm trying to be symmetrical here. At some point, I think you're going to have it all in the record. And then my staff and I can analyze it and figure out how to go forward. But we will have this additional round, and we'll see where we are. Okay, so anything else for this afternoon? I think it's fairly clear, I hope it's clear to both of you, where we're going forward on July thirtieth. Any, any last minute questions before we stop for the day?
Before we stop for the day, I was tasked with a number of action items. And I'd like to, at the very least, say them out loud to you so you know what I'm going to do. And maybe you could provide clarification if I misunderstood.
That's a good idea, but read them slowly so I can write them down. Because I want, and, and maybe if we can, well, I'll prepare a follow-up email to both of you confirming this. I think that would be helpful for all of you. But read your action items slowly, Mr. Prager.
My first action item is to create a revision, a strike-through revision of Mr. Hess's written testimony.
Yes, just the sentences you're revising.
Exactly. And then my next action item is to take the PDFs of PT thirty-six and PT thirty-eight and submit them and upload them to the AHO FTP site.
Yes, it's the AHO FTP two site.
Right. And my third action item is to upload any revised rebuttal testimony by no later than July twenty-fourth at four P M.
Okay, let me write this down. That, that's right, but I just want to write it down. So it's revised PT rebuttal testimony by July twenty-four, four P M. Okay?
That's it.
I think that's all I've got for you. So then, Mr., and Mr. Gonzalez, I think your only assignment is, if you want to submit any rebuttal exhibits, those will be your first rebuttal testimony exhibits. Your deadline also is July twenty-four, four P M.
Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Prager, have I missed anything for Mr. Gonzalez's assignments? I don't think so.
I don't think that you've missed any action items for Mr. Gonzalez, although I did just have a thought about how the rebuttal procedures are going. And this may get a little wonky, so I apologize if it's confusing. But my understanding is that there are two FTP sites. One is an upload-only, and the other is a download-only.
That's correct.
Currently, the prosecution team's rebuttal testimony is in the upload-only FTP site, meaning it hasn't been transferred over to the download-only section.
Right.
I would like to request that the prosecution team's rebuttal testimony stay in the upload-only FTP site until July twenty-fourth at four P M.
Okay, I think that is fair because you basically want it to be symmetrical since he's not submitting his until that date. And that is the way, that's why we have the two sites. One of the reasons is the upload-only, nobody but we can download things from there. I think you can see, that you might be able to see the list of exhibits, but you can't download any of them. So, and that's okay. We'll, we'll live with that. But yes, so we will wait for your revised upload, testimony uploads. We'll wait for Mr. Gonzalez's rebuttal uploads. And then hopefully, Monday morning, the twenty-seventh, my staff can post all of that for both of you at the same time to the AHO FTP site that, for which you can both download things. All right, that, that makes sense to me, Mr. Gonzalez. Your hand is up. Please go ahead.
The only question that I asked is, will I be able to see what changes they made? Little concerned about, I've given them information.
You know, I guess my feeling is since they, that hasn't even been added to the record. If they just, I haven't read any of it either. So if they want to just submit revised testimony and they say, please, you know, submit revised PT, whatever it is, forty-three, in lieu of original PT forty-three, as far as I'm concerned, we don't need to get into why they made the revisions because I haven't even looked at that. And, and, you know, basically, it's the same date for you to post your rebuttal to begin with. So I think the answer is no, we're not going to look at the originals. You know, at some point, we just can't go down every rabbit hole in this thing. And I assume, Mr. Prager, that's the way you'd prefer it.
I, I, I would prefer not to go down every single rabbit hole.
No, I, I meant, yes, I understand that. I meant you would prefer that you just post three, just have us post three revised exhibits.
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Gonzalez, that's how we're going to do it. They'll, prosecution team will have a set of exhibits filed by the twenty-fourth, one set, that we will read for the first time. We won't even look at the other stuff before then. We'll have yours, and we'll post it all to the downloadable FTP site on the twenty-seventh. I, that's just the simplest way to do that.
Okay, I'll agree with that. I just, the, the rabbit hole is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's not just an income. It's my livelihood and my children's livelihood. So I'm serious.
I am treating this proceeding very seriously. And that's, that's one of the reasons the legislature created this office is so we can have an independent office offer hearings like this. And I'm doing my best, and I'm trying very hard to be fair to both parties. But I certainly want both parties to have fair opportunities for hearing, and then we will consider all the evidence before we prepare a proposed order. So, so thank you. But believe me, that, I take that seriously. And, Mr. Prager, just so you know, I obviously take the prosecution team's exhibits and testimony seriously as well. I mean, it's, they, both of you, you know, you're doing a good job. It's, it's very important. You're both putting on very clear cases. So we need to go forward that way, and I'm going to take it all very seriously. So if with that, we've reached five o'clock, I, sorry it took so long, but I think this is helpful. I appreciate both of you helping me get through this. I'll try to get out an email confirming these action items, although I think they were very clearly stated. But just so we're clear, your, your deadlines will be July twenty-fourth. And then I'll see you both and everyone else at nine-thirty A M. on July thirtieth. Does that sound good? And hopefully, we will be able to get our public, whatever the thing is called, posting to the public so it's working by July thirtieth as well. So thank you all. Have a good weekend. I'll see you then. Bye.